Today is Monday, January ninth, 2023. It is nine AM and we are in city chambers. I call the City Commission Workshop Meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner Stokes, myself, Mayor Langdon, Vice Mayor White, and Commissioner Emmerich. There is a quorum for this meeting. Also present are City Manager Fletcher, City Attorney Michael Golden, thank you, Recording Secretary, and City Clerk, um, I'm hap- whoa, whoa, whoa.
Faust.
Faust, you keep changing your name. It's a challenge. It's not Emmerich, that's for sure. Also in the back, we have Captain King representing the police and Chief Titus representing fire. Kathleen Ferrian, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, is there any online public comment?
Yes, there is. Sandy Smith, keep the 2019 agreement in place, please preserve as much wild space as possible. Our world is fragile, please take care of it for future generations. Warm Mineral Springs should be a historical landmark and conservation area. You bring true wild places back, save what we can, concerned for all of us. Linda Manley, I am strongly opposed to the proposed P three amendment. The primary purpose of this unsolicited proposal is to make money for the developers, not to assist the city of Northport. Residents have made it clear that the pristine nature of Warm Mineral Springs should be preserved, not subjected to untold numbers of visitors, many of whom would be more interested in a luxurious hotel stay than in respecting the rare and unique character of the springs. Residents approved the 2019 plan, which has much, much less negative impact on the environment. The new P three plan intentionally downplays the massive environmental destruction that would occur during the lengthy and extensive building process. Completion of the monstrous project would require several years and would destroy nearly all the natural vegetation and wildlife. Regardless of what they promised, we have seen what developers and builders do to the land. It's clear cut, stripped, graded, and bulldozed. They plant very few spindly trees and non-native shrubs and try to convince us that they have restored the environment. Our springs deserve better. They lay sod composed of non-native turf that is not adapted to Florida growing conditions, which means they drown it in chemicals to force it to grow and more chemicals to kill the insects poisoning the little environment that remains. Our land deserves better, please save this rare treasure we have in Northport. Please, please listen to the citizens and respect their wishes by rejecting the destructive P three proposal and instead moving forward with the kinder, gentler 2019 plan. Anna Malesku- Maluska, sorry. Dear City Commission, Warm Mineral Springs has been a very great place to many people for many years from Florida, the whole country and around the world. Thousands of visitors have found their health again during swimming, relaxing, and soaking in the unique water that is located in Warm Mineral Springs. I am a big fan of it, that is why I moved out from Chicago to Northport. Sincerely, Anna. Barbara Lachart, my comment is regarding Warm Mineral Springs. The incompatible and intensive commercial and residential development currently being considered by the commission is nothing short of an environmental crime. This park and recreation area has the potential to be an even more well-known landmark for its existing natural resources alone, if only it was viewed for the asset it already is and marketed as such. Acres of scrubbery- scrubby flatwoods, beautiful stands of slash pine, a wide variety of native plants, stately live oak and majestic sable palm are all abundant in the untouched acres. In addition to the wildlife that resides there to include the threatened gopher tortoise, why is it that these existing natural things are not considered good enough to also be a tourist attraction in addition to the springs? Northport is a hundred and four square miles and those miles are under siege daily by clear cutting for development. Why would the city choose to agree to give away and subsequent clear cutting of its own parkland? Taxpayers choose to agree to give away, taxpayer parkland, to create even more empty of nature acres populated by concrete structures that have no guarantee of success. How is it that brick and mortar is the only answer to make the city any money? It has been proven time and time again that nature is what brings humans better mental health, physical health, feelings of gratitude, peace, and joy. The citizens have spoken and made it clear that nature is what they want to see at Warm Mineral Springs. Once nature is removed from the park, no matter how much work is done, it will never be the same. The underdeveloped acres as they sit today can never be replaced. Damage to the springs and salt creep from brick and mortar development can also never be undone. Conservation and restoration of the springs and the land surrounding it should be the only topic of conversation. Dale Bartush, good evening, I am writing to oppose the land development of Warm Mineral Springs. It is a public resource and to close, close it off to the public access first damaging the historical site or try and profit from the selling of the land is an injustice to the community and those who come here daily, call this home. I have free dove this for the last five years weekly and it breaks my heart that this is even a consideration. There is also so much empty land in the area for sale and rent that doing this does not make sense. Consider that building nearby is a better choice and will not compromise public access or risk damage to a one-of-a-kind natural resource. Bill Getz, as the only hot water spring in the Floridian Peninsula and in the state known for its springs, Warm Mineral Springs offers the most unique spring ecology and hydrology in the state. The fact that is one-of-a-kind ecosystem has been providing lifesaving warmth to manatees for tens of millennia should be enough to warrant consideration for preservation as a state park. But the springs offer so much more in its wealth and geological, paleontological, and even archaeological findings as humanly, as humanity has been drawn to the waters here for at least 12,000 years. People shared this site with mastodonin, giant brown sloth, and saber-tooth cats due to the ancient anoxic waters flowing from the spring vents at constant temperatures and lack of sunlight down the 200-foot-deep sea notehead waters. Everything placed or fallen in it has been remarkably preserved. Warm Mineral Springs is a hydrogeological feature located in a very brittle limestone karst. Any earth-shaken heavy construction to the surface and over top of the vents that feed the spring could lead to catastrophic collapse of those vents. Now, the very things that make Warm Mineral Springs so special are under threat of destruction by overdevelopment. In 2014, the people of Northport worked with the city commission to purchase the spring to protect it from a plan to build hundreds of condos and a hotel on the property. But now the city manager is pushing for a recently formed LLC to take over Warm Mineral Springs and build over 300 condos and a large hotel on the property. We need to make sure that this development disaster or any other future greedy plans do not happen. Making Warm Mineral Springs a state of Florida park is the best assurance for this. Please add your support by signing and sharing this petition. And then there's a link for the petition. Ella Mandis, hi, I just want to hear my opinion regarding Warm Mineral Springs development. I am strongly opposed to the development around Warm Mineral Springs. This is a special spot in Florida and I want you to respect that. It is very important to preserve nature and history of this place. You and whoever is involved in this project, please think about future generations. They deserve to see it, experience it, and enjoy it. I think by building hotels and residential housing, you will destroy something that was and still is very important to natives and residents of Northport and many people who visit this place from whole USA and whole world. I just hope someone is going to read this and consider my opinion. Please open Warm Mineral Springs to the public ASAP. FEMA Tompikoff, I oppose to the proposed P three development at the Warm Mineral Springs Park. It will destroy the environment and the ecosystem of the park. General public who actually using the springs are all against any development of the land and want to preserve its natural environment, I would like the springs to open ASAP for people who enjoy going there for health and recreational purposes. Renee LePere, I oppose the development of condos and hotels to Warm Mineral Springs at this time. We do not know what the environmental impact on the springs will be for starters. Secondly, with all this clear cutting and development, we are quickly, quickly turning into the East Coast. If you want the East Coast move there, leave the West Coast wild. Tracy Story, I strongly and deeply oppose to the proposed commercial development of Warm Mineral Springs. It is a jewel in Northport's crown. Why would anyone want to ruin it in the name of progress or is it just really money? Warm Mineral Springs is important to manatees and other wildlife and needs to be protected, not exploited. So much of Northport is being plowed under, we need to keep some natural areas to maintain our sanity and leave, and to leave for our children. Warm Mineral Springs contains history and is important to many people as a healing place. Please do not ruin the sanctuary in the name of money. Please leave wildness and nature a little room. Look into your heart and conscious before allowing development into the treasured area that means so much to so many. Thank you. Valdemir Ramontov, an environmental assessment must be completed and peer reviewed before any private partner or rezoning decisions are made. The private partner being currently discussed specializes in big development projects. The site near Warm Mineral Springs is very close to residential environmentally sensitive areas with underdeveloped infrastructure. We must ensure Alessio is the right partner with the best interest of the Warm Mineral Springs and its resident in mind. So, big development goals severe are now a day life. We voted for the current city council and based on results of many recent meetings, we so not, we so not feel we are being listened to. Many times, we said we were against rezoning for new commercial and residential development near Warm Mineral Springs to prevent risk of dying. Warm Mineral Springs is the lowest-flowing spring in Florida and we know examples of such catastrophic quick decisions. Slow down, do not waste too much money, and open the lake for current needs. Zehana, I cannot pronounce this one, Y E F I M O V. Good morning to all. With all due respect, I oppose the three P, the P three project. The Warm Mineral Springs must remain as green as it can be. A thorough, completely independent and strictly scientific research must be conducted to determine how far the development around it can go, how vulnerable the springs are. It has to be done before any development starts. We must preserve green spaces in Florida that we have not so much of left. The slam must be converted into a protected state park so we, the people, can enjoy it in its untouched way. The city of Northport has the funds to restore and upgrade the Warm Mineral Springs Park. Let's just do this. We do not need any outsiders who does not care about the sacred place. We are the people who have elected all of the chancellors and the city commission. We do not see these officials representing their constituents seem that it is business only. You cannot do this. We have elected you and we, the people, can take you out of the office if you do not want to represent our point of view. We love our land and must be preserved. Stop the overdevelopment and ruining our beautiful Florida. Please, 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 just take a moment and think about the consequences of this ignorance of necessity of our land preservation. Thank you. Jackie Lacher, the Warm Mineral Springs has been in need of renovation for years. In 2019, a light master plan was created. It respects the natural elements while making improvements that further engage residents and visitors. The event lawn and pavilion have multi-use potential that will benefit our local artists, artisans, craftspeople, service tradespeople, and citizens of all ages, demographic backgrounds, and interests. The thought of a 250-room resort and a seasonal rental community on the property is appalling. What should be preserved for the locals will become a tourist attraction of horrific proportions. Trust me, I've seen what high-end development does to local areas. We moved from Orlando, where we lived and worked for nearly 50 years, to Northport two years ago. The difference in community, traffic, road conditions, and amenities shift from family-oriented to corporate greed. We do not need a resort hotel or housing of any kind on the Warm Mineral Springs property. A nice restaurant featuring items from the property and locally sourced ingredients would be in tune with the 2019 concept. I support the cabins camping with proper oversight. I do not support RVs, there are enough RV parks around, we do not need another one at Warm Mineral Springs. I also think that someone other than the city should manage Warm Mineral Springs. A third party should be hired to manage the administration, ongoing maintenance, food, spa, merchandise, operations, et cetera. Warm Mineral Springs should be profitable while offering a family-oriented, clean, safe, well-manicured culture and local experience. Northport is not Disney World, Universal Studios, Busch Gardens, or a theme park. The proposal on the table would turn Warm Mineral Springs into a tourist attraction. All of the charm and history would erode away as buildings spring, spring out of that gorgeous property. Improve but don't implode the Warm Mineral Springs. Keep it sacred and free of corporate greed, corruption, and destruction. Make improvements that benefit our local residents, flora, and planet. Thank you. Ursula Kubrick, the city must slow down in selecting a private partner. We must ensure the right partner is selected who has the best interest of the Warm Mineral Springs. An objective environmental assessment must be completed and peer reviewed before any private partner or rezoning decisions are made. Most of Northport is already zoned for commercial or residential development. We must maintain green spaces, especially something as important and historic as the Warm Mineral Springs. The Warm Mineral Springs is the lowest-flowing spring in Florida and is already at risk of dying. I oppose the idea of commercializing the city-owned park. Carol McCoy, I am against the further development of the Warm Mineral Springs property. The area has been a peaceful, quiet, and natural haven for visitors for many years. The land surrounding the spring must be conserved as a natural area of wildlife and people to enjoy forever. The current footprint of the buildings around the springs is sufficient and should be refurbished from hurricane damage and improved. The shared plans for the area outline unnecessary and unwelcome sprawls and exploitation of a beautiful natural area. It simply doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. Northport has a duty to protect the springs. Sakar Zatz, the city must slow down in selecting a private partner. We must ensure the right partner is selected who has the best interest of the Warm Mineral Springs. An objective environmental assessment must be completed and peer reviewed before any private partner or rezoning decisions are made. Most of Northport is already zoned for commercial or residential development. We must maintain green spaces, especially something as important and historic as the Warm Mineral Springs. The Warm Mineral Springs is the lowest-flowing spring in Florida and is already at risk of dying. Ashley Bloom and the WMSDG have never set foot in the Warm Mineral Springs and have no connection to the land. It is simply a business opportunity and they do not have the best interest of the Warm Mineral Springs in mind. He is a good salesman, don't let him trick you. The city council is acting like they have already made up their minds on this partner. We do not feel listened to. We voted you in and we can vote you out. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have a number of folks in-house to speak. I'll be calling people up two at a time and you'll speak in order of being called. Before I do that, let me ask that everyone silence or turn your phones off. So, first up, Ms. Luke and Denise Walder, if you can both come up over here. Ms. Luke, you can speak first and Ms. Walder, second. You will each have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Jill Luke and even though the state told us that we don't have to give our address any longer when we give public comment, I do want to state that I reside in the incorporated city of Northport. And I state that because I behoove you to look at your map. When this area, the 81 acres, was annexed into the city in 2000, you will not find any homes in that activity center. It was annexed in to become an activity center so that it could help to balance the economic development and balance the tax, taxation of the residents to this community. So, the plan that is going forward is achieving why this property was annexed in the first place. I was probably the main one who, and Commissioner McDowell was sitting there too, that wanted the 20 acres preserved over all of the 81. Nobody goes on that, on that 62 acres. I've been going there since I moved to this city in 2009. I knew it when it was in private hands. I knew it when it was joint between the county and the city and I have known it since it's been in the city. But it is a city property for a reason. Any of those homes around that are in the county do not pay taxes to the city. They do not get a BTR for a business. And that property was annexed so that we could achieve that goal within our city. But the 20 acres is what's important to me because it does have to be preserved. And the footprint or the master plan that was put in place in 2018 did that. We also said that that 20 acres was preserved. And the P three that is coming forward is doing exactly what everybody in the city agreed to in 2018. But now I hear uproars going on when they're doing exactly what we decided to do on that 20 acres. The development that goes on, on the 62 acres, again, I will reiterate, it is an activity center. It was never a park. It was, and I agree with the person who said the city hasn't run it properly, it has not, but I have watched it go from activity center, not knowing who was going to be in control of it. And then, I was sitting up here, it was called a park. How in the world did we change an activity center to a park? But it gives everybody going thinking that it's something other than what it was designed to be. Now, a park should stay that 20 acres.
Ma'am, ma'am, you're out of time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Walder, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Denise Walder from Northport since 2014. We've been a full-time resident since then. We've enjoyed the ideals of the zoning and, and parks and pocket parks and all the recreation out here. And when I heard that the Warm Mineral Springs was, there's this new plan that was developed, I, it is a very historic place, especially for the community, the full-time residents, especially for those who live around Warm Mineral Springs. To me, to me, that seems like a residential area. It's a wonderful place for families to go. It's more about the quality of life here. Again, you hear the, the online comments were great and that's kind of where I'm going with that. The word came out, corporate greed. It, it, you know, it does appear, if city of Northport wants to own property, then you have to realize if you're going to work with businesses, that, that a lot of promises are going to be made, oh, this looks great and all the money. You know, the city is here to maintain the city, that the infrastructure, the roads. Promises that can be broken. This is something that you really have to sit back and think. What kind of quality of life are you giving the residents, the full-time people, the people who live here? We come here to escape our jobs, our works, and to get some fresh air. The biggest thing is with the Legacy Trail, the Friends of the Legacy Trail. I happened to see a little map and that Legacy Trail is supposed to end up at Warm Mineral Springs. What a beautiful place for a trailhead, to get people out. You're going to get people who live here full-time, they are going to go and, and go to different shops, stores, restaurants after their bike ride. You're going to get plenty of people by having a beautiful park and that 2019 plan. So, I'm kind of a long-winded, but I really urge you to sit back, don't be a commissioner and think about, oh, the city, we got all this stuff, oh, this looks great. The word came out, used card salesman, a salesman. Think about the people who have to live here. Think about you before you were a commissioner. What did you want? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Edward and Gabriella Ferland, if you would come up, please. Go ahead, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Gabriella Ferland. I'm a full-time resident of Northport since 2011. And I just want to say that I completely oppose the new plan for the development of Warm Mineral Springs. It just sounds outrageous, destructive, and just invasive and, and really negative impact. So, that's all. I'm just opposing it completely. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ferland?
That was my wife, but I've been in not put the same as long as she has. All I'd like to say is that there is a trail leading up to what we're talking about today. And your predecessors, okay, agreed, okay, on the plan. And I want to adhere to that plan, okay? And I am against any commercializing of that property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Lucy Bromberg and Juno Enoch, if you would come up, please. You have three minutes, ma'am.
I don't, I don't need that long, but I just want to say it was, it's my understanding that the master plan was made in 2019 and that master plan was to keep Warm Mineral Springs a recreation area and upgraded to, with some amenities that did not make any kind of major impact on the environment. I don't know, do you, do you really think that you want to start building on that fragile geological formation destroying any ancient limestone beneath the spring? Is that what you want? All of a sudden, trying to change the codes to fit your new plan. How can you in any good conscience do that and think about destroying the Warm Mineral Springs? Not only have you seemingly abandoned what feedback you got from our citizens, but you have done, done it in such a way that you have not sought any public input. Warm Mineral Springs is a recreation area. Please don't destroy this historical landmark and take it away from us. Give an entire city, an entire city without that to build hotels and restaurants. Don't destroy Warm Mineral Springs.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Enoch?
Hello. So, I live in the area right around Warm Mineral Springs. I lived there for about four years and I support a low-impact naturalistic improvement of the springs. The 2019 Kimberley Horn Plan that was made with- The 2019 Kimberly Horn Plan that was made with citizen input, I'll support that plan, but I do not support hotels, condos, or housing on that land. The city acquired the land with taxpayer money to make it a park, and I think anything besides that is going against the interests of the citizens. It's been said that Warm Mineral Springs is a tax burden and that this project will alleviate that, but we know that Warm Mineral Springs has been making the city money, even in disrepair. The city hasn't put money into it, but it's still been making the city money. So I do not want a public-private partnership. I think that the level of development would isolate the community that actually lives in the area and loves the springs, which would be myself included, from enjoying the springs. It would bring traffic to our quiet streets and a revolving door of at least 115 people from out of town into our neighborhood, into our residential area because of the hotels. And so for those reasons, I don't support the P3 development. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Edie Drist and David Ionati, come up, please. Is Edie here? There she is. Go ahead, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. I would like to ask you all to take some time, some serious time, to reflect on the fact that Warm Mineral Springs represents something sacred and historical with the knowledge that man once lived there and died there some 12,000 years ago. We know this because the remains of some have been found, which essentially defines the area as a graveyard. And so for us to make it into a Disney World, sorry about that, but anyway, seems inappropriate. This should be a natural holistic zen, kind of a place where there's a healthy-type restaurant, a museum, and a spa. Those things seem to fit. But to have a hotel and residential housing there, in my opinion, seems inappropriate. All that land, the 80-plus acres, should remain intact to honor and protect the spring. Protection of the spring should be much more than just drawing a circle around the 20 acres and calling it a day. That other 60 acres can also help protect it. Consider the flooding that took place during Hurricane Ian or another future occurrence. With the multiple retention ponds that are proposed, which by the way holds loads of pollution runoff, they could spill over into the spring, which isn't a nice thought. Why not make the 60 acres into a beautiful native plant park, which would attract birds, bees, and tourists who want to see what a true natural Florida landscape looks like? Think of botanical gardens. There are likely grant monies available to help with this. How about Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Program? Remember, native plant communities are becoming increasingly few and far in between due to so much development around us. Please look to the future and think of the legacy you're leaving behind. Regarding the RFP, it appears the cart has come before the horse. Citizens were asked to weigh in on the former master plan before the details were put into place. This time, however, it appears the details have gone in first. The latest proposal was unsolicited. How did that happen? And why is that the model we seem to be following now? This doesn't look good in the eyes of the public. Why aren't the citizens being asked for a vision now, and then that vision be put into the RFP? And last, why isn't the Economic Development Department helping in finding ways to reduce the cost of repairs to the damaged buildings or in finding someone other than Kim Lee Horn? Why are we settling on Kim Lee Horn's $18 million figure? They're known to be high in their quotes. Their breakdown of cost is indeed high. What's wrong with this picture? And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ionati?
Thank you, Mayor David Ionati, Beeville Avenue, Northport. You know, I think what can we take away from all the feedback of the citizens is that this place is, you know, not the right place to do this type of private development. You know, I hear lots of generalizations about why it's okay to do, a lot of them financial, and I find that very hard to stomach when we still, as a city, don't even collect proper impact fees for our residential building, but yet we're going to use this property as a means for financial gain. It's disrespectful of the site, and worse than that, you know, there was a process in place where the city spent money to have a series of public input sessions, and the citizens spoke clearly on that. They did not want intensive development. They did not want a hotel. That is also the reason why the city parted ways in the joint ownership with the county. And now we're going to ignore all of that history, and we're going to just move into this P3, and we're here today talking about changing our zoning codes to accommodate that? And how can anyone on the commission think the citizens are wrong to be flabberasted by that? I mean, this is more than just a parent's, you know? This is what has happened here. We've gone from talking about a property that was, yes, it's 20 acres and 60 acres. How can you pretend that the 60 acres doesn't affect the 20 acres? I mean, that's just, that's ancient foolishness. We should be beyond that. This is about respect for something that is bigger than just financial gain, and if all some people can think about is financial gain, there are always to do that without having a destructive, high-impact development there. You know, that Kim Lee Horn proposal did have ways to increase revenue for the city. However, as we know, the springs does still continue to be profitable, even though it's been neglected for decades now. So, you know, I'd really like to see the city and the commissioners really think about how much the community cares about this property and how there are other ways to get the outcome that the city wants, which I think is not to have to manage it, because quite honestly, I feel like this has come along because some people are really sick of talking about it. It's been around for a long time. We haven't done anything with it. When are we going to do anything with it? We're tired of kicking the can down the road. Well, let's do something that isn't like everywhere else, you know? Let's actually take the citizens' feedback, and let's develop something that enhances the springs but respects it at the same time. There's really no reason we can't do that. And you should really think about the appearance of impropriety moving so quickly with this P3. And I thank you.
You will please be quiet in chambers. If you hear something you approve of, please, a thumbs up. If you hear something you don't like, a thumbs down. We do want to know how you're feeling, but you must keep quiet and not disturb the meeting. Thank you. Our last two public commenters at this phase, Kristoff Merrill and Teresa Pratt, if you would come down, please. Thank you. You have three minutes, sir.
Hello.
I think, excuse me, before you start, I think people are questioning why they haven't been called up. Some of you requested to speak when we discussed the Warm Mineral Springs topic. I have another stack of cards, and you'll be called up at that time. Okay? Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to be in this group. I wanted to be in this group. Juliet Jones.
I'll find you, and you can be third and last.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
May I ask, Ellen Hale?
And that'll be it. Okay, two more?
Karen Phillips.
No, you're going to stay with the original group.
I was here before.
Go ahead, sir. Three minutes.
I'm a full-time resident of Northport. I live here eight minutes walking distance to Warm Mineral Springs, and I just moved from New York State to Northport just because of Warm Mineral Springs. And one of the most important things is to open Warm Mineral Springs as soon as possible. We are all waiting for it. It's already over two months since Hurricane Ian came and destroyed, and apparently nothing was done. Another thing is, I just wonder if this plan to build hotels, condos, and more is going to happen, who is going to be responsible for possible damage to Warm Mineral Springs? I have heard from the city hall official that you're going to hire an experts, okay? So an expert in the last two years, we've heard many of opinion and recommendations from experts, which apparently wasn't correct. So it's my concern. And my biggest concern is, again, who's going to be responsible if this plan is going to make a damage to Warm Mineral Springs? Is city hall, the builders, or an expert? And definitely not city hall, because our builders, because they're going to hire the experts. And so what expert is going to say, just in case if something is going to happen in the future to Warm Mineral Springs? They will say, oops, we've done everything possible, but anything can happen, right? So my recommendation is, and I'm not an expert, just to leave the Warm Mineral Springs alone and let people enjoy this place for the next centuries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Pratt?
Teresa Pratt, Bysteast Town Road, Northport. I've been here since 2018 because of Warm Mineral Springs. Commissioner White referred to the 61 acres of Warm Mineral Springs property as wasted space. Her exact quote, "Opponents really need to look at exactly what is being proposed." That's utilizing wasted space. Her insulting remark perfectly sums up how she, the other commissioners, and the city manager really feel about Warm Mineral Springs. The city manager proposed using the parking area in front of Warm Mineral Springs as a dump for Hurricane Ian debris. Obviously, if Hurricane Ian debris had been placed there, it would have added to the city's burden in opening the spring. To the people and local residents here today, I wish to stress that the urgent matter is the acceptance of a P3 with a potentially destructive outcome for the springs. Many people want the springs open as quickly as possible. I would like that as well. However, I am concerned about the springs being destroyed by what is being proposed. We all need to look at the big picture here and the future of the spring. Is every inch of land that isn't utilized, developed, wasted space? I guess it is in the eyes of our elected city officials with their vision for Warm Mineral Springs. I'm seeing plenty of wasted space, but it's not at Warm Mineral Springs. We, the local residents, are your constituents. This was never our vision. Is there nothing sacred and meaningful about pristine land and other living creatures? Land untainted by development, adjacent to a prehistoric site with archaeological and paleontological significance that speaks volumes? Does everything have to have a price? Can anything and anybody be bought and sold? And where do you draw the line? When is enough enough? Seems to me it's a bottomless pit, and it will never be enough. On the undeveloped 61 acres, there are living creatures that deserve to live in their natural habitat, as it has been for thousands of years, unspoiled, not to be displaced, killed, and discarded like trash from clear-cutting the land and the building of a concrete jungle. I would like to see the historic buildings restored, along with a modest restaurant and a small spa, as it was years ago. The restoration process can be done in increments. We have gone years without proper restaurants and lockers. We can forego that little luxury a little longer in exchange for not sacrificing Warm Mineral Springs to big development and potential destruction. We're talking about changing the ULDC and the comp plan to suit their needs to accommodate the current disaster's P3 or other P3s with potential for the same outcome, possible collapse of the spring. And you have basically discarded the 2019 Master Park Plan, which the public voted for because of the low impact on the environment. Stop the misconduct, stop the greed, discard the notion of a P3, and let Warm Mineral Springs be as it has been for thousands of years. Some things are more important than money. Warm Mineral Springs is one of those things.
Thank you, ma'am. Quiet, please. Thumbs up. Good. Juliet Jones and Ellen Hale?
In these times, it's sometimes difficult for people to determine the truth of a matter, and we are bombarded with lies, disinformation, coming from so many directions. On the other hand, it's sometimes really easy to spot a lie. On December 30th, I spotted a quote by city manager Jerome Fletcher in the Sarasota Herald Tribune. "We will no way damage or move forward with hurting something as sacred as the springs for the sake of a partnership." Here we have a local political player using media to attempt to misdirect and manipulate public perception with a con that's a real whopper. Who is this "we" that is going to protect the springs? Mr. Fletcher? This commission? Mr. Fletcher parachuted into Northport from Washington, DC, has been here relatively speaking for 10 minutes. He skipped over what happened over the past 10 years, a process which finally reached resolution in 2019, when the city commission deemed and told the public Warm Mineral Springs property would be a protected, low-impact parkland for public use. It was zoned accordingly. Now Mr. F presents himself as someone who knows all about money and costs and what's good for the city, but he knows nothing about the value of Warm Mineral Springs to the local and world community, a spring which has endured long before he was a gleam in his father's eye. Is he kidding? He knows nothing about the sacred value of the springs or what has made it sacred, and important, the delicacy of the chalice of the land, 60 acre, which that's part of the original parcel. And I'll tell you why I know what he said is a lie. If he really believed or understood what he was saying, he would never consider putting a project that this gang is trying to pull off with their outrageous plans for development. Think this over. Over the past 10 years, many, many, many thousands of taxpayer dollars were spent by the city, staff salaries, scientific and environmental studies, archaeological considerations, Kim Lee Horn presentations, the efforts of a great many citizens that went into the process of forging a plan for Warm Mineral Springs passive parkland as a sanctuary for the community and the world, not to mention the cost of the federal lawsuit that run against the city by Friends of Warm Mineral Springs, which cost the city roughly a quarter of a million dollars. I represent for Friends of Warm Mineral Springs here today, and our goal remains the same. We originally faced a group of commissioners and developers intent on basically the same thing that you're trying to pull off here now. We pledge to preserve and protect Warm Mineral Springs from the destructive development. Toward this end, we now pledge our allegiance and support to Warm Mineral Springs Preservation Group. They have the right motors, the financial and legal horsepower.
Ma'am, you're out of time. I'm sorry.
Oh, gee.
Mr. Hale, you're next.
Ellen Hale, Northport. I've noticed that missing from the discussions is the lack of any word from the people that have used the springs for thousands of years, the indigenous people. Well, I've received a letter from them. It's sent to me from Leroy Osceola, who is the clan leader of the Otter Clan, which of the traditional Seminole people. And I'll just read it verbatim, and I have a copy for each one of y'all. Commissioners, I've been involved in efforts to protect and preserve the integrity and sanctity of Warm Mineral Springs and the surrounding area since 1995. At that time, we spoke out against the annexation of Warm Mineral Springs, which would have enabled a developer to engage in a similar dangerous scheme currently being proposed. Both previous and current development proposals will produce devastating effects to an incredibly irreplaceable spring, that is, Warm Mineral Springs. We succeeded in our 1995 efforts to prevent the annexation, and the integrity and sanctity of the springs was maintained, with the hope that further efforts would be made to enhance the well-being of the springs. Now, in 2023, the spring and natural surrounding area, which naturally protects the spring, is once again being threatened by a developer. For us that recognize the sacredness of the springs and the relationships to the springs, to the natural surrounding area, we will and must speak out against this gross intrusion of the natural wonder that should be available to us, not only our generation, but for all generations to follow us. This project must not be approved. Why would Northport city commissioners even consider this proposed scheme? We are talking about devastating effects to a unique geological feature in which two aquifer sources contribute to a surface emergence characterized by rare water or high mineral content. And why would this be considered when the city has been made aware of the importance of this wondrous springs to indigenous peoples? You must surely be aware that to them, this is a sacred place, and that indigenous human remains have been recovered from the spring and the surrounding area. You must... You must respect and protect this spring and the surrounding area, not put it in danger of degradation. Springs are vital to the environment, and we must be engaged in restoration and water assessments programs that will ensure the Warm Mineral Springs may be enjoyed by generations to come.
Sir, you're out of time. I'm sorry.
I'll give you each a copy. They want to set up a meeting with y'all.
Thank you. Yes, we'd like a copy of that letter. Did I have one more speaker in this section?
No.
Oh, that's right. It was Kathleen. Yes. So one more, and then the others of you who have submitted cards to speak will be recognized at our second topic when we go into the discussion of what. You can give those to city clerks, sir. Thank you very much.
We're out of here.
Go ahead, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Good morning. I'm Kathleen Mary Tarian. My last name is in reference to my dad's name. He had no sons. I made the mistake of saying that I wanted to speak to the item number 23-0012, and I I'm so happy to live in a country that lets us all speak. It warms my heart to hear everyone express their opinions. I took part in the 2019 survey, which was conducted by a consulting firm and paid for by the city. The commissioners wanted to conduct this survey to gather opinions of the residents for their hopes for the future of the springs. What has been proposed lately does not reflect the opinion of our residents. I understand that a public-private partnership would be ideal for this situation. However, what was proposed recently is a travesty. The buildings now need much more than repair. Ideally, a new entry concession, showers, and restrooms need to be built. The diorama needs historical restoration. People need to be allowed back to enjoy the water. Please take a partnership back to the drawing board. At no time should there be a three-story hotel and condos allowed anywhere near that fragile system. Please use more care in planning the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, at this point, we will go into general business, item number 23-0012. City manager, would you introduce this topic, please?
Good morning. Yes, Madam Mayor. This topic is our next discussion in the conversation of the ULDC Development Review. We do have Ms. Katie Wallner from our planning department to provide a presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning. For the record, Katie Wallner, ASP, Planner 3, with the city of Northport. So we're going to talk about Chapter 2 of the draft ULDC today. Basically, my presentation is going to give you an update on Chapter 1, and then we're going to talk about Article 1, 2, 3, and 4 of Chapter 2. So Article 1 is Administration and Enforcement. Article 2 is Development Application Types. Article 3 is Application Requirements, and Article 4 is Decision Makers. I'll go over some Chapter 2 highlights, and then we're going to talk about some questions and comments at the end. So our update of Chapter 1, we did the commission workshop, well, we were supposed to do the commission workshop on October 3rd, but that was canceled because of Ian. So that was rescheduled to November 7th. Since then, I have sent Chapter 1 to all of the reviewing departments for concurrency, for review of the concurrency standards, so there'll be some minor changes to that. Obviously, today is our Chapter 2 workshop, and so I think that basically covers our history up until now. So Article 1 is Administration and Enforcement. So basically, the first two sections establishes the authority to require applicants and the applicable fees included in the chapter. The third section establishes all of the general principles that apply to all development applications. Again, one of our big concerns with this rewrite is to make information easy to find. So our intent is to create all of the general application information in one's place, so that as an applicant is interested in applying for something, they have one spot to look at all of the information that they need, and then we'll have more specific information for each of the application types. So sort of our highlights on Article 1, we're no longer going to require pre-application meetings. Right now, our pre-app meetings are required for all application types, whether or not an applicant has applied for anything in the past. And so oftentimes, we have developers that we work with on a regular basis that still have to do the pre-application meeting, and staff uses a lot of time trying to respond to drafts and things for the pre-app meeting, and some of it is unnecessary. So the intent there is to streamline the process. We're going to allow concurrent reviews, and the new code, which is, we are currently doing, the new code establishes what order they have to be approved in, so it creates a verifiable process of, you know, if you have a comp plan amendment and a rezone and a site plan, your comp plan amendment has to be approved before your rezone can be approved, and then your site plan can be approved. Essentially, it establishes all of your entitlements on the property first, and then it'll allow you to do whatever steps to develop it after that. The application review process is clearly delineated, so any applicant that is applying for any type of application knows that they're going to go through, you know, one process first, then they're going to go through the next process, then they're going to move through the next process. So it's very clear how an application moves through the process and how long each part of the process should last. The chapter talks about all the review phases, the application holds, all of the noticing requirements. All of that is consistent with state statutes. We tried to keep this as simple as possible and to make it as compliant as possible with the state statutes. A lot of the language comes straight from state statute. And then we're looking at how to allow for some online publication for public noticing requirements. We know with technology these days, most people aren't looking at printed copies of the newspaper, so we want to make sure that we can be more reflective in our noticing requirements with online noticing or online publication for public hearings. So Article 2 talks about all of the development application types. This table sort of started as my brainchild of trying to keep all of the different application types and what they were doing straight, and then I thought it might be really useful for whomever is using the code. So basically, you have all of the application types, sort of in categories along the left side. You have their definition, their purpose in the middle, and then you have the section at the end. In municode, you can actually link the section to the section that it actually is. So if an applicant is interested in a site development plan, they would be able to click the link at the end of the site development plan line on this table, and it would bring them directly to the site development plan information in municode. Again, it's for ease of use. Some of these have a couple different application types in them, so the application type is more of a category. The intent with the purpose, again, is to provide information on what that category includes. For example, division of land includes, like, preliminary plots, final plots, but it also includes minor plots. So there are some things that are included in that category that are different applications, but if you are splitting, combining, or adjusting the land, basically, you're going to the division of lands section. So we might tweak this table a little bit to make it a little bit more clear as to which application types are in each category, but the intent here is to make it easy to find all the different application types. So basically, we have annexations voluntary. We don't address involuntary annexations because they're in state statute, and we very rarely use them. Appeals, comprehensive plan amendments, conceptual plans, conditional uses, development agreements, division of land, public art, rezone, site development plan, special exception, ULDC text amendments, vacations, variances, waivers, and minor planning applications. So basically, anything that's lumped in the minor planning applications are things that only go through the planning department. It's the zoning verification letters, zoning determination letters, temporary use permits, all of those things that the planning department would take care of, and it doesn't have to go out for full DRC review. I thought of something as I was going through that. I don't remember what it was. So that is mostly Article 2. So Article 2 contains all of the application types. Article 3, oh, sorry. Article 2 also contains this table, which is supposed to summarize information, make it very easy to understand how an application moves through the process. So public art, for example, we have the application type along the left-hand column, and then we have the approval document. We have information on the decision maker. We have the required public hearings. We have the notice requirements, and we have the appeals column of who would hear that appeal. And so the idea here is to make it very easy for both applicants and for staff, because so often, we are trying to figure out whether an application has one hearing or two hearings, and does it go to PZAB or the zoning hearing officer, whomever it might be. This helps sort of put all of that information in one area. So as I was going to use public art for an example, the approval document is either a letter or a resolution. Decision maker is either staff or city commission. It might have one public hearing, and so anyone can look through this table and understand what the process is. So Article 3 is all of the application requirements. So most of this is summarized also in a table. Again, the intent is to make it very clear. Tables help with that quite a bit. Along the top, or top row, are all of the different application types, and then along the left column are all of the different application materials. So these are all application components, and all applications have different required components. So basically, the table summarizes all of the different components, and then for each application type, either marks it as required or not required, and in some instances, highly recommended, because it's not necessarily information that we need to make the decision, but sometimes it can help in the public hearing context or something else. So Article 3 includes all of the application requirements. After the very long table with all of the different components, there are descriptions of each of the application components to make sure that when someone looks at this table, they understand what we're looking for for each of those components. And I did send Chapter 2 out to all of the DRC, the reviewing departments, and they have made some adjustments to the table since it was sent to commission, but we've already checked with them to make sure that they're good with all of the application components and all of the requirements there. Article 4 provides information on the decision makers. So again, in that table in Article 2, that third column talks about all of the decision makers. Any decision maker that is described in the column is described in Article 4 of this chapter, and it describes how they relate to this chapter, not necessarily all of the broad duties and whatnot that is included in the code now. Staff understands that that will require some companion ordinances for the city code, and we'll make those adjustments as we move forward. So our highlights for Chapter 2, we have a lot of charts and matrices. We have the application quick reference chart. We have the decisions matrix, and we have the application requirements chart. We have clear descriptions of decision makers, the approval document type, the public hearing requirements, and the application process and requirements. We have streamlined application procedures. So again, we'll no longer require pre-apps or potentially neighborhood meetings for all application types, and we're going to have some flexibility with site development plans being reviewed administratively and not as many applications requiring conceptual plans. So staff did meet with one of the commissioners to go over some comments and questions prior to the meeting today. A few of those require commission direction. If you want, I can address each of those, and we can do them together that way. Does that work?
Yes. Yes, go ahead and do it that way. Thank you.
So the first one is regarding conceptual plans for all development. So the way that we have it worded now in the chapter is that conceptual plans are required for projects exceeding 30 acres, and they are, you can, if you are a developer, you can request for a conceptual plan, a voluntary conceptual plan, to go through some of the process, just so that you get an idea on how the public might be feeling about your plan. We have, we've heard some concerns about not requiring them for all applications. So my question is, does commission want to require conceptual plans for all development?
I see a couple of folks have put in to ask questions. Is that on this topic, or is it on another topic?
No, it was, for the neighborhood meetings.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, that was my question, just to clarify that, because you said there would be no neighborhood meetings for anything. That's what you were proposing in that slide?
So it is.
Could we present the hours to all of the conversations, maybe outside of the chamber?
Yes, thank you for that, Commissioner. Please, out of respect, if you feel a compelling need to chat about something, if you could go out into the foyer to do that, we would really appreciate it. It gets very difficult up here to concentrate on all the information that's being shared. So if you could do that, I would really appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner.
I apologize for the interruption, but please.
Thank you.
So in the draft right now, it is strongly encouraged for a list of application types for neighborhood meetings. With that, we also wrote into the code that staff has the ability to require them, and if an applicant chooses not to do the public meeting when staff has recommended they do the public meeting, that we can recommend denial of the application. We know that some applications are going to be contentious. We know that others are not, and so for things that are allowed by right, for things that, you know, we know or we don't expect it to have any sort of controversy, then we don't feel that the public meetings, requiring public meetings for all applications is necessary. That is something that we can change, though, if the board or if the commission would like to.
So I guess my question is about those contentious, possible contentious ones, such as land use changes, special exceptions. Would those still be required to have neighborhood meetings?
Right now, they're not written as required to have them, but we do have them strongly advised for annexations, comp plan amendments, special exceptions, subdivision plots, future land use map amendments, and rezones.
Just strongly advised?
Correct.
That would be by you?
That would be by staff, ULDC administrators, the terminology that we use in the code.
Okay. All right. All right, because I really would like to see those types that public neighborhood meetings would be required, just to share my thoughts with my board members.
Okay, so that's for projects under 30 acres, is you want to see public meetings for all?
Those particular instances that were pointed out. Those particular instances that were pointed out. Right, okay.
Well said. Commissioner McDowell?
Neighborhood meetings, in my opinion, are the best tool to get the word out of what's going on in their neighborhoods with potential developments, regardless if it is done, is allowed by right, or if there are going to be any changes like special exceptions or rezone. Citizens want to be informed of what's going on in their neighborhood, and even if it's by right and there really can't be any changes, they should be able to be informed of it. And removing a neighborhood meeting, which is currently required for all DMPs, regardless of the acreage, all DMPs require a neighborhood meeting. If you remove that, you... That did not come on very quickly, guys. Sorry about that. If you remove the neighborhood meetings that are currently required for every DMP, regardless of their acreage, I guarantee you, you will have more and more public distrust. These neighborhood meetings are imperative at every level of development. So I agree 100% Commissioner White currently. The list is for annexations, special exceptions, comp plan amendments, subdivision plaits. This is your list, so I'm going over it, the, the future land use amendments and rezones, but there is no mention of conceptual plans, which is the new, I, correct me if I'm wrong, the new phrase for a development master plan or DMP. We have to make sure that those are included, those DMPs. And just so you know, the conceptual plan is for mandatory, is for all projects within an activity center, and if it's outside of an activity center, it has to exceed thirty acres. Outside of an activity center, I went and did a very quick twenty-minute search. I came up with three outside of an activity center, and the majority of them are out in Yorkshire or in Wellen Park. There are neighborhoods that have development within their general area of pre-platted communities. So those neighborhood meetings are, are imperative, and I really think they should be retained as they currently are.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stokes?
A question first. How many under thirty applications are there in the course of a quarter or a year?
I don't have, I don't have that figure.
Dozens, a few?
I don't, I don't know what we've seen.
In the course of a year, again, we weren't prepared with this figure.
Real rough. I'm not looking for a specific number.
I would say probably in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty-five.
Because, I mean, my feeling is that while I'm all for trying to streamline government, because by God, things do move slow, I concur with, with Commissioner McDowell. I, I really think it's important that the public be able to speak on these issues, whether it's seven acres, eleven acres. It just seems to me that the backlash of not doing that causes more disconnect and more dysfunction than anything. Better people be heard. There's so much misinformation. There is so much uncomfortableness that the public has with government that I think if we're going to err, let's err on the side of openness and transparency and inclusiveness. And I know this does add more work. I appreciate it, and I know the effort here is to try to streamline the processes, but sometimes, as painful as it can be, it's better to do this. People need to feel empowered and involved in the process. And some of these projects, especially as we look at the development we're looking towards in our city, everybody wants lower taxes. Everybody wants a seat development that helps balance things, but nobody wants it in their backyard. As a result, every project that takes place, everything we on this day sit and talk about is going to involve communities, it's going to involve people in the neighborhoods. They have a right to speak. They have a right to voice their concerns, their discontent, and hopefully, it has an impact. There are three parties to everything, the commissioners that make this decision, the city staff and developers that recommend, and the people who live in our community that have a say, and their opinions should weigh on our decisions. They may not always like our decisions, but they should be heard. We should understand their feelings so that we can have a more balanced response to these projects. So it's my two cents on this one.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Anyone who knows me knows I'm all about cutting waste out of the process, and I'm all about efficiency and reducing the cost of government, but I need to agree with my fellow commissioners. When it comes to community involvement, I'm all about over-communication and eliminating something that helps us connect and communicate with the residents of the city just doesn't settle very well with me. I'm going to take Mr. Emmerich, Commissioner Emmerich, out of order since he hasn't spoken yet, so go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I agree with the rest of the group up here, especially, everybody's talking about the negative aspects of this, but what about the positive aspects? When the community gets to speak and put input, they may be able to change some of the design and actually get something that they want within their community by being able to address those situations. So I'm in agreement with this.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Commissioner McDowell, do you have something?
Yeah, just something real quick. I, being up here for six years, I've seen where they've had neighborhood meetings, and to Commissioner Emmerich's point, the developer, after hearing from the neighborhood, pulled their entire project. And for staff to be the gatekeeper of when they have a neighborhood meeting and when they don't have a neighborhood meeting, that doesn't really sit well with me. I think it should just be required for all development master plans, like we currently have, or conceptual plans, whatever y'all are going to call it, but we really need to, to keep that. And Mayor, if we could get a consensus to retain neighborhood meetings as currently done for the development master plan, I would be grateful from hearing from each of you.
Before we do that, I see some new faces up at the comment area, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Landplandin. Lori Barnes, Planning and Zoning Manager. Before we, we move with the consensus from commission on, I think the first item is concept plans as opposed to neighborhood meetings, I wanted to give some insight as to why staff is recommending that concept plans be voluntary except for larger-scale projects. First of all, consistency with the economic development element of the comprehensive plan, which calls for streamlining of the development review processes. To encourage economic development, providing assurances in the development process and eliminating circumstances where a project that might be permitted by right, that meets the design standards 100% is declined by a commission, that does expose the city to potential litigation. So the thought process here is to both streamline the development review process and to help minimize the city's exposure to litigation. I also wanted to touch on the voluntary nature of the neighborhood meetings, or community meetings as we're calling them, and the new ULDC. An applicant will still be encouraged and be completely capable of holding that neighborhood meeting. Where we run into trouble is when changes are being made or being requested to a project that meets our code 100%. And if this commission adopts regulations and design standards that are high-quality and provide for the compatibility between uses and the appropriate buffering to minimize impacts, then maybe there'll be more of a comfort level to move forward with a more streamlined development review process.
I, I have a question regarding that. Where else, so if, if, if we don't have the community input at the design phase, where else in the process would we have that? And what's the potential impact, cost, and delays to the developer for waiting, and staff and the city for waiting later in the process to have that input?
There, the, the input would be through this ULDC rewrite process, and the rezone, or the zoning chapter and the design standards chapters that are coming before you in the coming months. The recommendation is to prepare regulations that give the commission a comfort level to remove that public input component. So many times in a public hearing, emotions are high, and the community is concerned about the type of use or the design of a project, but if it meets the regulations 100%, the commission has little to no discretion to deny a project without exposing the city to that potential litigation. I can tell you that we do have our development reviewer online, so if anyone's interested in what is happening in their community or in their neighborhood, they can go on that interactive map and see what kind of projects are coming.
Thank you. Any questions or comments based on that input?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, Commissioner, go ahead.
Well, if we were to go that route, then what difference would it make if we had the community input? You know, I'm just saying, if, if we're handcuffed up, up here on the decision that we're making, it doesn't hurt the public to be able to talk with the developer beforehand. I mean, they could possibly sway the developer to do something different, or not, but knowing coming up to the commission that they have 100% right on going forward, we're handcuffed and it passes. So what difference does it make by either having that community gathering or not? It just opens up the door for the public, in my opinion, to have that gathered.
Commissioner Emmerich, something to consider in light of your comments is potentially requiring that community meeting in advance of formal applications, but still eliminating the concept plan or what's now known as development master plan approval, thereby giving the public the opportunity to talk with the developer and try to negotiate changes to the plan while eliminating that public hearing process and the potential exposure in the event the commission may decline a project that meets code.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, usually the neighborhood meetings are held maybe a month or two before, coming before PZAB. So the developer pretty much has their plan in place, has already met with staff, and they already know what is allowed by right and what is not, at the developer's point. So when they're going to that community meeting, and they're meeting with the citizens, and the citizens say, well, hey, why don't you do this? They can say, well, we are required to do that because the current code. And I've been to neighborhood meetings. I don't know if any of my fellow commissioners have been or not, but where the developer does say, we are allowed to do this. It comes before commission, and the commission, we've heard development master plans where there were no waivers, there were no special exceptions, we've approved everything, even though some citizens were saying, nah, not in my backyard. But we were able to use our leadership to be able to explain to the citizens from our role, our perspective in this quasi-judicial proceeding, why we could not change something. It became an educational process, and it informed the citizens from us, their elected leaders, on why or why not we can't do something. I think, my opinion, we have to keep these neighborhood meetings, and we must keep the DMP process in process, in place that we currently have. To make any of those changes, I would never be in favor of, because you are cutting out the citizens, and that is not what I was elected to do. So I am in favor of keeping the neighborhood meeting and keeping the DMP process. If you need to change a name to concept plan, that's fine, but I think everybody understands where I'm coming from with the DMP process we currently have and keeping neighborhood meetings.
Commissioner Stokes, do you have something new to add?
Just to concur with Commissioner McDowell, I think first and foremost, people have a right to be part of this process, and I get that there are restrictions. I get that there are submissions that meet all the guidelines, meet the comprehensive plan, the ULDC, and the commission needs to approve. That may not be to the liking of our citizenry, but if we cut out these public meetings, they're clueless as to the process. They have no forum by which they can voice their concerns and hear the reasons why sometimes a project needs to get approved or a change needs to be permitted, because that's the requirement of the ULDC and the comprehensive plan. And by excluding them from that process, I just think we ferment more distrust, more uncomfortableness that the public has with us as their representatives, especially in a city that's, has so much change that's occurring. I think the more open, the more communicative we are, the better. So I still say, let's, let's keep this in place. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Bowles, do you have something new to add to the conversation?
Yeah, really, well, the Economic Development Focus Planner. The one part I would add specifically when talking about the DMP process and requiring that to go to public hearing is that businesses look at the ULDC, they look at, this is my rulebook. They feel that I'm playing 100% within this rulebook. Why can I not just go through the process? It's the only allowing people to go through the public comment, go through an extra, excuse me, step of the meetings, to then change what they're doing that is already part of this rulebook that they've played that is also different than other municipalities in the area, which then puts Northwood at a disadvantage when it comes to development.
You all know I'm all about economic development, but I'm also about balance. And if, if something has to tip the scales in my book, between achieving a little more efficiency for the development versus giving our community an opportunity to provide input, I've, I've got to give the jump ball to the community. So we're going to have to find other places for efficiency. I think we're making a lot of progress in terms of concurrent processes in our development cycle. We're making progress in terms of assigning a project manager or ombudsman to, to large or strategic economic development projects, and I think that's where we need to focus. I'll entertain additional input if it's net new. Commissioner McDowell, do you have something new to add?
Do not. I was going to recommend get a good, getting a couple of consensuses if you're ready.
Go ahead.
First consensus Mayor I'd like to get is to retain the neighborhood meeting requirements as it currently exists for the DMP process.
We have a consensus on the floor to remain, to retain neighborhood meetings in the development process. Commissioner Emmerich?
No, that's not, and just to be...
Would you restate it?
Yes, I would. To retain the neighborhood meetings as it is currently required in the existing DMP code process.
Okay, I think we have that right now. Commissioner Emmerich?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice-Man White?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have our first. You said you had two.
I do have another one, is to keep the DMP process as it currently exists in our code... I do have another one, is to keep the DMP process as it currently exists in our code, possibly changing the name to Conceptual Development Plan, but that'll be up to the staff's review.
Okay, so we have... Do you want to repeat that one more time, Commissioner?
Keeping the DMP process as it currently is required in the existing code, possibly changing the name to Conceptual Development Plan as staff continues their review.
Any comment on that?
I do. Process, including referring to what? What they proposed?
No. What, the, if I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
The consensus I am looking for is to keep our existing DMP process as it is in the existing code, not what they have outlined here. Because here, they're saying a voluntary and then a mandatory, but mandatory is if it's outside of an activity center, more than 30 acres, which I've already said there's only a very small handful.
All right, so you're just referring to that particular process of requiring the neighborhood meetings and not, because they have proposed having concurrent reviews?
The neighborhood meeting has already been addressed.
Right.
The first, I'm talking about the entire DMP process that currently exists in our code being taken out of our current code and being placed in this code as it currently exists, which requires the commission to approve DMPs regardless of size and nature.
Right, okay.
That's the way my consensus is reading.
Is everybody clear on that? Commissioner Emmerich?
So let me ask you a question real quick, if I can. Would this be, let's say somebody's got 30 acres out there and they want a development in single homes. They're breaking it down into three-acre plots for single homes. Would that be included in this?
Yes.
So they would be mandatory to go through that whole process?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a no.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, because I, again, I just want to clarify, you propose changes, like you're saying, pre-application meetings are not required. So the consensus would be, no, no. Right, I'm sorry.
I'm only talking about the conceptual plan development that they are referring to in the code. Everything else that they have talked about in these 35-ish pages, I'm not talking about. I am only talking about the conceptual development plan, which is being renamed from what we currently do as the Development Master Plan. So the DMP process, I am looking to retain. We would already be approving that 30-acre subdivision that comes before us. That's what we would already be doing, Commissioner Emmerich. I'm looking to retain that authority.
And I understand that, and in my opinion...
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that should be staff's job to go ahead and approve and deny when it comes to single homes and that small acreage of land.
No, we don't do individual homes now.
Well, it's a process. They want to take the land, break it down into three acres for homes. And they had meetings about it last week. I had a meeting with them. I'm sure everybody here had meetings with them. So I didn't know it was being brought up here all night.
Oh, I wasn't even talking about that.
Okay.
I'm just talking about...
I asked if that was included in what you're proposing.
But if we don't include it, then we are going to be having all of the DMPs that come before us now not be part of our process and not having the citizens' input. We've had many DMPs where there was not one citizen in here.
Oh, I understand that.
But we've had other DMPs where we thought we wouldn't have any citizen input and they were here. And we were able to educate them and be able to, and have that dialogue and that interaction with our constituents and them with our elected officials.
Before we have more conversation on this point, I'm seeing an expectant, does someone from staff want to comment on this particular item?
Can I interject first? So we can also, instead of requiring 30 acres or more for the conceptual plan process, we can reduce that to something that is a little bit smaller. The idea with the 30 acres was that most of those projects are going to be multi-use, multi-tenant-type, large-scale developments. Whereas if you have one parcel where the use and the proposed layout and everything meets all of the code requirements, all they're doing is a gas station or all they're doing is a insert development here, whatever it might be. If it's just one thing, then it would still have to go through the DMP process that we currently have if you decide to include all of that in the new code. We could create a lower threshold where it might be 10 or 15 acres, which then you would see, you know, more of those projects coming through for public hearings through a concept plan, but you wouldn't necessarily see all of the smaller commercial projects coming through. Because at that point, if it's one parcel, they're doing one building, I mean, it might be a dentist's office on five acres, it would still have to come through for DMP approval. And, I mean, you're looking at one building on a parcel. And so the intent with reducing the number of projects that would require a concept plan is to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up for litigation, number one. And then for number two, we're not bringing things constantly to commission that don't really need the full, that aren't going to be that impactful, if that makes sense.
Yes. Director Ray, I see you hovering a little bit. Do you want to add to this?
Good morning. You always notice what I'm hovering, don't you? So we, my suggestion was going to be to allow us to work, maybe work on some refined criteria to narrow this down so that it's not everything that doesn't come to the commission. But we are concerned about things coming to the commission that meet code 100%. That does open the commission up for potential legal action if it's denied or even if you persuade a developer or an applicant to make revisions to that plan at that stage. There are laws that have been passed in Florida and have had multiple rulings on that expand the Burt-Harris Act. And if a developer or an applicant is standing here and believes they have been pressured to do something, they can sue the city. And the penalties are severe. So we're trying to minimize some of that legal liability. The other thing, too, is if we are going to require the neighborhood meetings for all of the applications, that does allow the applicants to speak with the developers prior to, my suggestion on things that are by right, if you're going to require still the neighborhood meetings, require those prior to an application ever being submitted. If someone has, if an applicant has submitted an application to the city and it's gone through all of the staff reviews, multiple changes, and we're a month from a public hearing, that applicant has spent, in a lot of cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get to that point. It would have been much more efficient and effective if they had met with the applicant or with the neighborhood at the beginning of all of that process to incorporate the ideas from the residents ahead of time rather than after. They may have spent half a million dollars to get the plans to where they are. I've done that personally before I was ever in the planning field. Met with a neighborhood group that I organized in my home, had a developer come in who was doing, wanted to do a development. Before they ever submitted their application, they got input from us. It made things much smoother rather than all of us wanting to come out to a public hearing to, you know, oppose it. We were then on board with it. So I think there are some things that we could do. We could make some adjustments to where it would provide that input that you're looking for. It would provide that opportunity for the neighbors as well as ensure that we can minimize that legal exposure that you would have from a Burt-Harris Act action.
What, I hear you and I'm leaning to concurring, but we're also aware that we have an awful lot of work to do on our ULDC. We need to have zoning conversations later in the year. And what makes me very uncomfortable in this conversation is particularly around our activity centers, where we do a great job in terms of what type of commercial development we want to have in that space. And oh, by the way, we can do residential development, too. And we haven't had an opportunity as a board to tighten that up.
So my suggestion to that would be to pause this until we bring those chapters to you. I made the comment last week to a commissioner that a lot of the processes that we have in our code now were built to address bad zoning code. The solution to that is to fix the zoning code, to fix those provisions that don't do a good job at getting us to where we want to be and don't provide what the neighbors are looking for in their areas. And that way, maybe the processes don't have to be so onerous because there is an ironclad guarantee in the zoning provisions that we're going to get what everybody wants, understanding that there are still going to be some necessary things in those procedures that are designed specifically to inform the neighbors, to ensure that they have that input that they're seeking and ensure that the commission is able to communicate effectively with the citizens. So I think we could, this particular part, we could pause, we could work on trying to clarify some things or drilling down some criteria, but also with the understanding that we need to revisit it once you've seen the zoning and the subdivision codes so that there is, we get those codes to a point where you know it's good code.
Right. I would like to ask for a consensus around that, but I'd first like to ask Commissioner McDowell, would you like to discontinue your consensus or do you want us to play it up?
I'd like to continue because I am that passionate about retaining the DMP process as it is for our citizens.
Okay, Commissioner?
Well, I already voted no.
Okay, I just wanted to revisit that. We've had a lot of conversation.
On my last conversation.
Vice Mayor?
I'm going to vote no because I'm not told, I hear what was said. My big thing was about retaining those neighborhood meeting requirements, and we've already said we want to see that in there.
We have no say in anything at those meetings. So for the neighborhoods, not us.
So for me, I'm also a no on this, and I'll have an alternative consensus. Commissioner Stokes?
I'm a no on this one.
Okay, so that consensus has failed. As an alternative, I would like to pose a consensus to pause the conversation on the DMP process until after that time that we've had an opportunity to review the corrections in our code so that we have good zoning code and then we can revisit this. So on that consensus, Commissioner Emmerich?
I'm a yes, but I'd also like to make a statement. We knew we were going to have to bounce back and forth when we were going through these chapters, especially when we get to a certain point that a few things may need fixing at the same time. We're at that point right now. So I've got no issues going back, fixing other things, coming back. But you understood where our gist was in the conversation today moving forward. So you already know what to expect when you bring the others back. So thank you very much for that input.
Absolutely, and that's one of the benefits of doing this in a work session where we can get that input and then we can go back. And as we flip back and forth, we'll have these areas noted. So we know when we bring the zoning up, we can come back and talk about this.
Talk about this. Terrific. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'm a yes because I know that you have heard what our concerns are and as Commissioner Emmerich said, that that's the purpose of a workshop as opposed to a meeting that you can incorporate and make those little adjustments until we get that final package. So thank you.
And I'm a yes, Commissioner Stokes?
I'm a yes with a comment also. The reason I am a yes is that I do, I do have a sensitivity to being able to streamline this process. And if an applicant is adhering to the plan and the ULDC, it ought to be able to move through the process easier. And I worry, as I've heard from staff, that as commission gets involved, sometimes we feel a pressure to make decisions that are not in conformance with the law and with our ordinances. And I think that this will, this will better serve the city. And as long as the public has their say and their involvement and commission has the ability to weigh in prior to, and I see this process as making a whole lot of sense because it does take effort to get some of these things through. And when they, when they meet all the guidelines, when they meet all the rules, they should be able to move through the process and staff ought to be able, okay.
Thank you. Commissioner McDowell?
I will be a yes, but I will be very carefully reviewing the zoning because I am not for streamlining it if it leaves the public out of the process.
I don't, and I don't think any of us are, and that's clear in our conversation here today.
I just want to make sure that staff is hearing that, too, because the last consensus was one to four, and that's why I felt the need to reiterate that.
Okay, thank you. So I don't see any final comments, so let's move on to public comments.
Oh, wait, we have other things that we need to get commission direction on. That big one was the largest one that I wanted to talk about. We had, talking about conceptual plans and neighborhood meetings was in there. So we covered both of those. There's also one that I would like to have, Mayor, is when we are trying to do an administrative decision, currently we are provided, provided with certain materials. And I would like to make sure that we have a requirement that a staff report and all required application documents will be provided to whoever the decision-makers are prior to public meetings as agenda backups. Obviously, if it's staff is the decision-makers, we don't need to see a staff report. But if we, as the commission, are the decision-makers, we really need to see the report, we really need to see the application. And that's not spelled out on page four under item, I think it's C, Administration Decisions. I'd like to make a, like a new requirement.
Any questions or comments on that topic?
Yeah, I would like to hear staff. So staff will always include, there are certain statutory requirements and then there are common practices. For anything that's coming to public hearing, we're going to write a staff report and provide all of the backup documentation. I don't know that it's something that we need to codify and spell out exactly what that would include in the code as it may change, and then that would then require code amendments. I, it's not, it's not something that I would recommend to include in the code.
Any questions or comments on that?
The question, when, what reports were you referring to and at what point are they, are they?
So in the past, for the past six years, some... So in the past, for the past six years, some development master plans, some public hearing documents, rezoning, things like that, not all of the information has been provided. Commission has had to request certain information from the, from staff.
Oh, okay.
And this way, we can just say, staff, if it's required, it has to be included in the backup material. And if there's anything changing in the ULDC after we make that rule, then that will be addressed at that time, too. You know, let's say they say, well, we don't need to have an environmental survey. Well, then obviously, they're not going to be required to provide it. But if they are required now because maybe a potential change to provide an environmental survey, it would be required. I am looking for the entire application package to be included as backup material, not only for us, but for the citizens.
Director?
Thank you. There are a lot of times materials that are submitted that aren't transmitted in the packet, and some, a lot of those are engineering-type reports or, you know, large drawings, things like that. But we are talking about, for some developments, you could be looking at thousands and thousands of pages that will be attached to your agenda. So what we typically do is we provide, in our staff report, we discuss some of the things that have been reviewed, the types of things that staff has reviewed. Those documents are available upon request, stormwater calculation reports, things like that, that are really, the people who are looking at those are engineers. Some of us don't understand all of that engineering speak. That's why we don't have a PE after our name. So there are, there are sometimes documents that we don't include in with the packet simply because they're voluminous, for one thing, and it would make the packet unwieldy. But they're always available on request, and we typically, in our staff report, we would reference those documents if they're available and discuss what, you know, a summary of what was in those documents. But that, it is entirely up to the commission. It's just sort of some background as to why not all of the documents are always provided in.
And again, they are summarized in the staff report.
Right.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I had a question. So you kind of touched on it. Are they referenced at least so that we know they exist?
For instance, when a stormwater management plan has been reviewed, then that section of the staff report would discuss the stormwater. And so that would indicate that a stormwater study has been conducted. And it would provide, for instance, if they did a hundred-year stormwater study, then that would be mentioned in the staff report, and that stat, that plan would be available on request.
So at that point, it can be requested. But at least would it be made known that they exist, these documents, and if we wanted to have them further? Okay, thank you.
And, sure.
And if a community member wanted to access that report, what process would they use?
They could simply call our office and we would, we would provide that.
Thank you.
I would also like to add that the table in Article III of this chapter has all of those application components for each of the applications. So if you were looking at a site development plan and you were interested in, you know, did it have, did it include a survey? Then you can look at this table. You would know whether or not a survey was required for the application, and then you can request said survey from, from staff. Per the sunshine law, everything that we get is public record. So all of that's available.
Good. Anything else on this topic?
I hear I'm not getting support, but I'm sure the citizens are fully aware now that they can request these documents themselves.
That's why I asked the question. And so the next topic identified by Commissioner McDowell that we need to review is?
Regarding posting signs on them or requiring sign postings?
You missed one on page four. It's letter F, notice and advertising requirements.
I have a question, but.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind, by postponing this section, didn't we postpone this to discuss this at a later date with all of this stuff?
This is a little bit different stuff.
I'm asking staff.
I'm not thinking that all of the aspects of this conversation would be delayed, but specifically to changes to the DMP process.
That was my understanding as well.
Okay, so we're still gonna tackle these other issues?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
So the second one on page four is about neighborhood meetings, which I believe we already addressed. And do we want to require neighborhood meetings for all application types? And what I gathered was yes.
Yes.
If you read letter F, and letter F, it says, notice and advertising requirements that all development applications shall provide appropriate notice to the public per Florida state statutes. I had also recommended that the language be added to, yes, appropriate notice per Florida state statutes and according to other ULDC noticing requirements, for example, community meetings mailed notices that goes out to the neighborhood, to the surrounding area. So it wasn't just Florida statute, that there are other notice requirements that take place even with these proposed changes. And that's why I had suggested adding and according to other ULDC noticing requirements or whatever staff's words are. But they wanted to have a conversation with my fellow commissioners to see if we wanted to add that.
Well, I think we're required to follow all ULDC requirements, so I'm not convinced additional language is needed here, but how do my fellow commissioners fall on that?
I agree.
Not needed, any sense?
I think that we're following everything like we're supposed to, sorry, like we're supposed to, and I think everything's good in my opinion.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, we're doing what we're, just the minimum, what we're supposed to do. We don't put out signs because that's not required.
Right.
Correct. And we just don't do that.
Anyone else? So I think without calling for a consensus that I think would fail, I think you have an idea of how the individual board members are following that. Next topic?
That's for the noticing requirements. We'll stick to state statutes?
Yes.
Okay. And then the next one is, do we want to require signs posted on the property that would go above and beyond state statute requirements?
I'm a no.
Anyone else?
I'm a no on that.
Commissioner McDowell, I see your name up there.
The reason why I put this in here is when we had our first go-around of ULDC, the commission was very excited about including a sign to be posted on the property to alert the citizens around that general area that, hey, hello, big yellow sign, something's going on with that property. Because not everybody is going to get the neighborhood requirement for mailing. Not everybody reads and pays attention to legal notices. I understand they should, maybe they will start, but posting something on the property kind of brings up that level of attention. And it was actually a five-zero, everybody agreed 100% to have those larger signs placed on that property. So that's why I put it back in, because that revision was from the consultant, and this is now through staff's revision. So I just wanted to make sure that it didn't get lost. So I am a yes in retaining the thought of posting something on the property as long as it does not hinder the process that has to be had. If somebody steals the sign, knocks over the sign, and takes out the sign, or the sign fades, that's, they posted it, they took a picture, it's done.
I haven't called for a consensus yet.
Yeah, I know.
So staff, any additional input given the conversation?
So the reason why we didn't include the required posting, sign posting in the code initially was that it often causes a lot of problems in the public hearing process. Signs are often not posted on the right property. Sometimes they fall over, sometimes the neighbors steal them. If we don't get the wording correctly, all of that, if the sign disappears for some reason, then they would have to continue a hearing or repost a hearing or re-advertise a hearing. It can cause a lot of administrative challenges if it is a required component for public noticing. So that's my caveat to that.
I haven't commented on that, but I'm in agreement to have signs. I've always enjoyed seeing them when the county posts them. And as Commissioner McDowell said, that's the only way you know something is happening. And then as an informed citizen, you can go and research what's going on. I know we don't have any control over what happens to the sign, but at least it's another way to give notice here this is happening. Because I know on River Road, there have been things that have been approved before that lightning started, and I think people will be surprised when they see a church being built there because that came along years ago. And that's because I saw that sign and I asked somebody about what is going there. And so I think it's really valuable to put those signs where, when there is these changes being made.
Clarification, what kind of information goes on that sign? Is it just a posting that there'll be a public hearing on a certain date?
Generally, it's the applicant, the address, the petition number, and the request. Sometimes they include like a map or something. It depends. Every jurisdiction does it differently. But most of the time, it's the basic information of, you know, the petition number, potentially the hearing date, and who to contact if you have, if you want additional information.
I'm inclined toward the sign, but I'm a minimalist in terms of what gets communicated on that sign. But I see Commissioner Emmerich has asked to speak.
Yeah, I got a question because is this being done in our neighboring communities? And would this distract from our economic development down the road? Isn't it an added cost to the individuals making sure that that sign is up and maintained? I mean, those questions are, is it a deterrent? Besides what you've discussed already being on staff's burden, is it a deterrent on bringing people in here, getting stuff done?
So I know that, or I believe Sarasota County requires signs. I know that City of Venice requires signs. When, I worked in the City of Venice probably about four years ago, staff had to post the signs. So every Friday, we would go out and post signs. And we have to, we had to create the signs as well. So it takes staff time to create the sign, post the sign, and then make sure that the sign stays there. I've seen it done other ways and other places. Sometimes it's just a little, like, smaller sign and staff writes it up, and then they give it to the applicant, and the applicant has to post it. But oftentimes, we have applicants that are out of state, so then it's code enforcement or a planner posting or, you know, someone on staff posting. As far as providing information to the public, I think that the sign at least alerts neighbors that there's something going on on the property, though I think that oftentimes, it's unlikely that you're gonna drive by and see the sign and know what the sign says because there's no way to make it large enough and, you know, not be a cost burden on either the applicant or the city to, to make it so that you could drive by and know what was going on. It would just be essentially a flag stating that there's something going on, and you would have to do the research thereafter.
Yeah. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, and the sign is, depending, I've seen them as small as like the little, like, yard sale signs, if it's a small property. And I've seen them as large as like billboards where they're staked in. I absolutely would not want staff to be responsible for posting a sign, absolutely not, or at the taxpayer's expense, absolutely not. The developer wants to develop the property, they can put the signs up, take a picture of the sign, be done with it, included as the application packet. This way, everybody knows the sign was made, the sign was posted on the property, done. And make it like bright neon green or bright neon yellow. It doesn't have to say everything, rezone, the petition number, the date of the meeting, be done with it. The citizen can come around, park their car, get out and go, oh, my gosh, I got the information I need, and make their phone call.
So the purpose is not educational.
It is education.
It's to alert that there's something going on with this property and a call to action on how they can participate. So Vice Mayor?
Yes, that's all it is. And I know, again, because I know someone who works in the planning department at the county, and they revise their signs. They usually have those orange signs where they wrote stuff, and you couldn't even read it. And they simplified, and at least now you know something's going on. And as Commissioner McDowell said, yes, I have done my share pulling over, taking a picture of the sign and asking questions, but at least gives people the opportunity. And the talk about what if the sign disappears? Well, what if it does? We put out the information that we're gonna have meetings. Again, we have no guarantee people are seeing that information being put out there either. So I don't see a problem with having the applicant be responsible for at least posting the sign initially, and that's it. If it disappears, it disappears. But at least it's another avenue for people to find out what's going on.
Mayor Langton, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I might have a compromise position to offer, but before I do, when an aggrieved party or, and it's usually an aggrieved party, challenges development approval under a writ of certiorari, the majority of time, they're looking for the low-hanging fruit to attack first. And that low-hanging fruit is due process and meeting public noticing requirements. That being said, requiring that sign as part of the public hearing process can create a condition where we end up in court, we lose the challenge and have to rehear a project. So that adds to time, cost, et cetera. So the compromise position I would like to offer is since the commission has made it clear that neighborhood meetings should continue to be required, why not have the applicant post the property as far, as part of the neighborhood meeting process, thereby getting that information out in advance of any public hearings that would come before you? The applicants who didn't receive the mailed notice would see there's a sign, would be able to see, park, get out of their car, see where the meeting's going to be held and the meeting date.
That's.
I'm, I'm good with that. My thing was, I didn't want to add on to the burden. And if you see something going on, wouldn't it be just as simple to where you're zooming by the sign, you can't see it, you can't read it, but you can call the building department and say, hey, what's being built over there? Can't your curiosity be quelled just like that if you're curious in your neighborhood? So why overdo it and make requirements on top of that? My other question was, is for the city attorney, because we are in a workshop stage, and I thought that when we have our consensuses, if there's one negative, then it's dead unless we're in budget workshops. Because we've gone through here and we've had four-to-ones and three-to-twos or whatever. It's not a majority. It's, isn't that the way that we do things?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
I think I always state that a particular consensus is not binding, but that staff has some insight in terms of what we're thinking on a topic. So city attorney, is that suffice?
That's great. I think the clerk wanted to chime in.
Yes, we have only received two consensuses so far.
Correct, but one was a four-one.
Well, that wasn't a consensus.
That's not a consensus.
It's not a consensus, but it should have been a dead consensus at one no. And then it should have been done.
If consensus has been requested, we mark it as consensus was requested to, not there was a consensus. So it is worded differently.
Okay, but I'm just getting at to the legalities, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner McDowell, do you have something new to add on this?
Yeah, I just want to, to, I liked staff's compromise. I'm all about compromise. And if staff is willing to take a look at that and come up with that compromise for the neighborhood sign, I'm all for that. Mayor, if you'd like to get a consensus on that?
Sure.
Unless you feel staff is gonna.
Come back with a consensus on the topic of signs.
We will have to rewrite the neighborhood meeting section anyways, and so we can adjust based off of our conversation today.
Okay, Commissioner McDowell?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes?
Good.
You have to speak up.
Yes.
I'm a yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be a yes on the compromise, as long as it's going to be looked at already.
Right. So we have a consensus on that topic. Staff, additional? Right. So we have a consensus on that topic. Staff, additional items?
I think we just have one more. And it might be something else that we want to table for a later date. The consensus item was whether or not commission would allow a variance to buffer size when a property is adjacent to residential. I think that this might be best discussed after we have our buffer sizes. And it's limited in the code as to how much we can do administratively. But it might be a better conversation once we have a better idea of what the buffers are going to look like.
Because we're going to be relooking at all of those requirements.
Correct.
I would certainly be supportive of that. How do my fellow commissioners feel? Pause conversation on this?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that's long overdue.
This was your item, Commissioner McDowell. You okay with that?
I am absolutely okay with that. Thank you.
Okay, good.
I believe that's all of the items that I had.
Commissioner McDowell, did we get all of yours? Commissioner?
Yes, the waivers. If you go to page 26, it says, my question was to staff, will the waiver application be presented to commission at the same time as the DMP? I think maybe this might be covered in future conversations. I'm not sure. I just don't want it to get lost. They said no, that the commission would not be providing information about waivers. And I just want to make sure there's not a misunderstanding on this.
So the way that it's currently written is that commission would be the only one providing direction on waivers. It would be a separate application process. Right now, we allow for deviations through the DMP process. Instead of doing, lumping them together, the applicant would request the waivers, and then they would be able to go through the site development plan process. And again, commission would have the full discretion for the waiver in those instances. So they wouldn't necessarily be presented together, particularly because as the code was written, it wasn't written where commission would be giving approval or denial of a DMP or a site development plan. So these would be a separate application. If an applicant wanted to request any waivers, like, they want to remove the buffer requirement on their eastern property line or something, then that would be a waiver request. It would come to commission. Commission would be the ones that, because you're the ones that establish the law. You're the only ones that can waive the law. So it would be a separate application. So they wouldn't necessarily come together, but you guys would still see it.
At some point. Thank you. Thank you for that clarity. And to my fellow commissioners, I just want to, before we wrap everything up, I want to thank you for your conversations, especially about the DMP process, neighborhood meetings, and keeping the citizens informed about neighborhood developments. It was a very worthwhile conversation, and I'm very grateful. And I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up. Do my fellow commissioners have any other questions or comments in this chapter?
Just to clarify that waiver part. Because right now, we don't see them until they come right at that point.
You're in the staff.
What you're proposing is that they would come for that. So they, at least the applicant would know, this isn't, this isn't sitting very well.
Correct.
Or make these adjustments. Because right now, that's really difficult to do when you've got the final thing in front of you.
Yeah. Basically, it would, the applicant would have to request the waiver. It would, they would go through the process, which would include public hearing.
Right.
And then they would be able to submit for their site development plan, which we would review based off of the code requirements and whatever waivers you may or may not have approved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other items or questions? I have one, and I'm almost hesitant to bring it up because we have discussed this topic ad nauseam. But on page 16, regarding public art, our intention here is to shift responsibility for identifying public art to the developer of that property, and not so much the commission. I'm all for that. But in light of that, I'm thinking that requiring the developer to find an artist in a very restrictive geographic area is burdensome. And I'd like us to consider expanding that. I think when the city was making those decisions, it was appropriate. But now that the burden is more on the developers, I'm thinking we need to open that up. Thoughts?
So I believe that that was revised right before it was adopted. This version that I sent to commission was a previous version of that code section.
Great minds. So how does the revision read?
The revision eliminated the requirement for local artists.
Okay.
And we will update that before we bring it back to you. Chapter two was drafted before the commission approved the revised public art ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
So this will be reflective of whatever was adopted.
Wonderful. Page 21, I just had a question around temporary use. Where would things like carnivals, events, other kinds of events? I did not see that reflected in item B3, temporary use. Most likely, it's somewhere else, but it's not here.
Right. It is somewhere else. The city has a separate special event code, and the special event applications are processed through the Parks and Recreation Department.
All of them, not just the partnership ones?
Correct.
Great, thank you. That was my question. Anything else from my fellow commissioners? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Let's move on to public comment on this item. City Clerk, do we have anything online?
Yes. Bill Getz? City of Northport, ULDC, Section 9-4, relationship to comprehensive plan, the city shall coordinate with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, the USFWS, the West Coast Inland Navigation District, and other local, state, and federal agencies as applicable, to maintain and enhance manatee population throughout the region. Coordination activities may include, but shall not be limited to, development review, enforcement of manatee protection zones, and public education, and any multifamily, commercial, or office development proposed on property within the City of Northport, which abuts the Mayacahatchee Creek, flowing from the Warm Mineral Springs to the Mayaca River, will be required to conduct, to contact the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, manatee experts to determine the best management practices for development, and any mitigation necessary to protect manatees which may utilize this tributary, where the FDEP manatee experts consulted, if so, when. With language like the city shall, and any multifamily, commercial, or office development proposed, it's clear that these are pretty important steps to rezoning a place like Warm Mineral Springs. Steps put there to protect manatees and special ecology and spring provides, and a rezone that is purely designed to allow a handful of people to profit from a place that was purchased and with the people's money to protect it. A handful of people who can just walk away from their limited liability after they destroy our spring fence system and earth-chattering construction, and just walk away from the shelves of their unfinished condos and hotel, leaving us in debt with bank loans attached to our property and a giant mud hole in the ground that does not flow. Any discussion about zoning changes with the commission is inappropriate without first having done due diligence. And that's all.
Thank you. And I have three people in chambers who want to comment on this item. Alan Hale, you are first up.
Yes, I wanted to talk to the lady who gave.
Please, please repeat.
Alan Hale?
Thank you.
Northport. Who was the lady who gave the presentation? Oh, there you are. When you showed category, I think it's four.
Mr. Hale, public comment is not used for Q and A, either with the commission or staff.
Okay.
I'd prefer a public comment from you. And then if you could catch up with these folks during break, I think that would be the best use of time. So go ahead, please. Three minutes.
I wanted to know when, during her presentation, that category four, I think it was, were those departments, they had listed the P and Z, and Parks and Rec, and there was another one?
You can follow up with staff after the meeting and get those explanations.
Because there's, if it's advisory boards, we, I didn't see the EAB that listed it as all. So I just want to make, is that a staff department she's showing, or advisory boards?
Okay, if you could follow up with staff after, that would be terrific. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Jeffrey Scott?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Honored.
Most residents assume zoning helps neighborhoods with land use issues, but it really doesn't. Zoning is a convenient way for city government and outside developers to control everyone else. Zoning enables developers with enough money and clout to swear elected commissioners to favor their proposal, even when there is opposition from Northport residents. Northport residents in close proximity to a proposed development will experience firsthand the fallout of a bad policy decision made by their Northport City Commission. Controversial compromise will not protect those residents from excessive noise, or traffic congestions, or more importantly, an increase in criminal activity. A neighborhood's quality of life will not remain intact. It will actually decline over time. The city of Northport has always had difficulty, has always had a difficult time building relationships with those they serve. Instead, they seem to favor the developers. This manipulation by outside interests of the people's business cannot be tolerated without public input by its taxpaying residents. I want every taxpaying resident in attendance to agree. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Luke, you are up.
Jill Luke, Northport. I appreciate what you guys discussed in regards to having those public meetings, those community meetings. I look at it even from a different viewpoint of being fair. You can't choose one nonprofit over another. Or you shouldn't choose one type of business over another also, because all of them are important. So neighborhood meeting for somebody for something small is just as important as a meeting for something large. So I appreciate that. Director gave an excellent suggestion of having it part of the application. They have that meeting prior to the application, or on the application to submit. I would question, though, removing the pre-application meeting totally. They could come in for a pre-app after having the meeting or that. But even before having a community meeting, the pre-app helps the developer or the builder to know where to go, whether it's accepted, whether it's not. You don't want to leave them blindsided. You're going to have staff time heavy in the front, or in the rear. Doesn't matter. Staff's going to have to look at it. They're going to have to address it. Now, do I agree with streamlining the DMP for somebody who is compliant and fulfills all of the regulations? Sure do. I think that needs to be streamlined. With it coming to commission, and they have fulfilled everything within the code, y'all are on the hot seat. If you do something incorrect, if that staff tells you that it is compliant, you have to fulfill that. If you don't, you're in the hot seat. The litigation is going to fall on your necks and your head. So I think as long as you are informed, because I don't believe any of you want litigation within the city, as long as you're informed and know that it's compliant, it's streamlined. And you can deal with it. It can be handled. Thank you. Posted signs, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner McDowell. Biggest reason we said that in the past was clear cutting was going on. People didn't know what was going on. So it could be part of that application process also, of going, you know, having that community meeting and notifying, but at least the public then knows. And it should be on the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. We have been at it for close to two and a half hours. I was debating whether to take a break or lunch, but I know a lot of folks are here to talk more about Warm Mineral Springs. So I'm going to take a 10-minute break to 11:30, just so folks can take care of their biological needs. And then we'll meet back here at 11:30 and here at 11:30 and swing into the Warm Mineral Springs topic.
Then the waterway segments between structures progressively decrease in elevation from north to south and from east to west. This system configuration allows both retention of stormwater runoff for water quality treatment and storage for potable water use. In preparation for a storm, the gates are opened as needed to convey floodwaters. The city has an ongoing program to inspect and replace old corroded structures. Since 2006, 13 of the high-priority structures have been replaced or rehabilitated. The city also has a program to clear the ditches of sediment deposits that have accumulated over time, and clear fallen trees and debris in the Mayacahachi Creek. This also helps restore the flow capacity of the waterways. Long story short, Northport is prone to flooding, but the city works hard to maintain conveyance channels, water-control structures, and procedures put in place to lessen the impact. When there is a hurricane or significant rain event, the city gets into response and recovery mode quickly after. Please stay safe out there.
That's why we're here.
11:30, we're going to resume this morning's workshop. The same, but we're missing two of our players. I'm sure Commissioner Emmerich is on his way, and City Attorney Gole might see him coming down now in the back. We still have Police Captain King and Fire Chief Titus. So, continuing on general business, item number 23-0062, discussion and possible direction regarding Warm Mineral Springs potential comprehensive plan amendments. But before we go there, I find this morning, a number of people brought up the reopening of Warm Mineral Springs, and so I'd like to ask City Manager to give us just a quick update on where we're at with that progress.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In addition to this morning, I was going to...
Your audio. Do I need to repeat that?
No. Oh, you, maybe. Because mine was already on. There, I want to take us back a little bit and go over some of what's happened in the course of the last few days. When you look at the situation of the springs and the comments and the feedback that we got, we're really looking at protests that happened last Friday, progress of opening the springs, and then a P3 update as well. So, on last Friday, January the 6th, we were fortunate enough to engage with some of our community and protesters in a democratic process, and just wanted to provide some information on the exchange about what I heard as some of the main themes and what was said. So, one of the main things that was said is that the 2019 master plan is the roadmap and you are changing it. For clarity, we are exploring other development options than the plan to allow for more economic impact to the city, while at the same time balancing the environment's instability, preserving the maintenance of park space included in the integrity of the nature and history of the asset while creating a better customer experience. The changing of the plan is something that is, like I said, being explored, and I want the community to know that they are included in the process. Something else we heard is that you are not listening to us, and this process, we understand, is very important and emotional to everyone in the city. For the 2019 master plan, this city won second place in a statewide contest for listening, and there's no desire to change that at all. So, based on the sequence of events, we want to make sure the community knows that they will be heard throughout the process. Final decisions will be made with their input; they just need to be patient. We will have a robust community engagement process, and I hope to see all the same passionate energy today and the future, and I hope that it does not go away throughout the process that will continue for quite some time. Because once the springs is open, it is natural for people to sort of go back into their usual processes, and we don't want you to do that; we want you to stay engaged. We also heard development will destroy the springs. So, according to the city's leadership, myself and the commissioners, we have pledged, and more importantly, the law says that the historic preservation of the springs must be maintained. I know we're going to get into some of the ordinance and items that were passed by the bodies of the past, but there is no, it's not optional for us to decide whether or not we want to preserve the springs. It is not optional for us to say, "Well, maybe we want to do something that's going to harm it." That is not an option by our voices or the law. And then the last thing was the proposal by the prospective vendor is not good for the city. We need to, and we will do better with making sure that everyone understands the process of the P3 code that we're going through right now. What that means is that there are different steps in this process where the proposal that has been submitted, which has been rightfully submitted, will further get more scrutiny, more details, more information flushed out of it. There's nothing, there's nothing final yet, and you would be and should be disappointed if we were telling you that something has been final based on where we're at. As you look at that piece of the procurement process, we will be going out for a competitive review. Competition helps everyone in mostly everything that we do, and there's others who have expressed different pathways of how to achieve what we want, and we want to hear that. So, you will be seeing that process take place. And having said that, no negotiations have happened yet. Even from the information that you see in the proposal, things have to be negotiated through a team of subject matter experts to make sure that whether you're concerned about the environment, whether you're concerned about the nature, the economic impact, all of that will be answered in a way that allows you to understand that we're not doing anything too quickly or too hastily. So, as it relates to the progress of opening the springs, I want to make sure that everyone, please remember to visit our webpage for Warm Mineral Springs on our Northport website and sign up for email notices. They will come to you directly, so you don't have to search for the information as we move forward and we keep you up to speed. We will receive a delivery timeline this week on the two modular units for the office and the restrooms, and that is the main pieces of equipment that we need as we get open. The government process isn't fast; I think we've already talked about that, but it's intentional due to controls and checks and balances. We also have the tree removal and general contractor work that needs to be done in our procurement process, and the vendors will be identified shortly. The timeline for opening still remains spring break or March of 2023. The P3 process final update is that the code is new, and, you know, people may have a hard time following it, so we're going to provide more information online to show you sort of the steps of where you are in the process, where you will have your community engagement in the process, where you will see the things happening. I don't believe that anyone up here wants you to go away from the feeling of, "Well, we did this big, massive community engagement process in 2019, and now you're, now you're making decisions around us or without us." I believe it's just a matter of understanding where your voice falls into the process. We are still currently working with the Phase 1 professional designer to build on the prior work to ensure that we have the necessary control in place to keep it historic and preserved. When you look at the RFP that went out formally for this project, you will see that there is a lot of historical components to it. We wanted to make sure that it was preserved in the right way. There are studies and reports that have to be done in advance of any work being done. So, when you say that we want to preserve it and keep it safe, those were already in documents that were already done to make sure that we do have those steps in place. And those steps are going to be conducted by subject matter experts. You know, they're not just the city staff here. We will make sure that we have the right people with the right voices providing the most accurate information for us to act upon. So, Madam Mayor, that's the, that's the update from all three of those steps. We'll continue to sort of keep reiterating what we're doing, because I know it's hard for everyone to be in one place at one time to hear it at that time, so we'll just need to be more consistent as we communicate and as we listen to the community.
Yes, thank you for that update, City Manager.
Your audio, Mayor.
It's on. It's on. Checking, checking, is my audio on? Well, stop the flash. I saw her thumbs up. Okay, City Manager, this is your topic, so why don't you introduce it for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this topic is discussion and possible action regarding Warm Mineral Springs potential comprehensive plan amendments to achieve the P3 vision for Warm Mineral Springs Activity Center and corrective amendments for Activity Center 7A. And as our planning manager, Lori Barnes, stands before us, I think it was relevant for us to say that this is an activity center, and I think that part of what we are doing and asking and putting in front of the commission today is to discuss options about what parameters we would like to see on this activity center for it to be at its best and achieve the components of a plan that we are still working towards. These are all just sequential steps in the process to make sure that you don't get too far ahead of yourself, but at the same time, these plans do not take away from, again, the community engagement that we're avowing will be present throughout the process. So, I'll turn it over to Lori Barnes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for that. Ms. Barnes?
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioner Lori Barnes, Planning and Zoning Manager. Here to discuss with the commission some potential comprehensive plan amendments. Staff felt that the commission should be aware would be required in order to achieve the P3 partnership that's currently being proposed. Part two of the presentation will discuss corrective amendments to Activity Center 7A. We have found that there are some conflicts between previous rezoning that was granted on the property and the comprehensive plan provisions for Activity Center 7A. As you can see, Activity Center 7 is the property in which the Warm Mineral Springs currently exists. 7A is to the south and southwest of Activity Center 7. The provisions in the comprehensive plan from 2017 for Activity Center 7 provide for 52% of the property to be developed as low-density residential at a density of four dwelling units per acre, and provides for a floor area ratio of .15 for commercial and office development on 15% of the property. Additional limitations in the comprehensive plan include an overlay of a rec open space future land use designation on portions of the property which has a future land use designation of Activity Center. In addition, the comprehensive plan calls for preserving 7.02 acres around the springs itself, and provides for limitations for residential, a not-to-exceed number of 270 single-family, and limits the square footage for retail and tourist amenities as well as spas and institutional and conference centers. Lastly, the provisions limit any residential development to within 400 feet of the conservation area. This is the future land use map for Activity Center 7. As you can see, 51.41 acres has an Activity Center future land use designation with about 30 acres designated as recreation open space. And the red line on this aerial map indicates the 7.02 acres that is required to be set aside as conservation for the springs. Now, the numbers you see before you are based on the 51.4 acres as far as density and intensity that would be permitted in Activity Center 7. This is because the set aside of the rec open space area. Under the current comprehensive plan, the site could achieve 106 dwelling units, which is contrary to the not-to-exceed amount that's provided in other sections of the comprehensive plan. And the commercial and office square footage is limited to 40,249 square feet, which is less than the designated square footages in other sections of the comprehensive plan. Also calls for setting aside of 36% of the site for public recreation open space. The Warm Mineral Springs P3 proposal does set aside the 7.02 acres of the conservation area around the springs, provides for a wellness center, resort hotel, recreation and community zone, the Native History Museum and restaurant, and a destination residential component. This view is rendering of the potential placement of the buildings for those uses. Now, in order to present some high-level recommendations to the commission as far as comprehensive plan amendments that may be required to achieve the P3 vision, staff made some assumptions as far as the development intensity based on the submittal items from the applicant. The P3 proposal proposed 115-room hotel, or proposed 250-room hotel. So, we did some research about the average hotel square footage is, hotel with 115 rooms averages 48,000 square feet. So, staff assumes 10,000 to 20,000 square feet for a conference center and a total of 125,000 square feet for the hotel. The plan shows amenity, event, and performance areas, which staff is estimating at 100,000 square feet, medical offices from 50 to 100,000, to 100,000 square feet, a restaurant of 10,000 square feet, and a wellness center of 70,000 square feet. Now, keep in mind, as the commission continues to work with the P3 proposer, these figures are likely to be refined. Staff develop these as estimates to start the discussion about comprehensive plan amendments. Now, to accommodate the P3, the first required amendment would be to place the Activity Center future land use designation over the entire site. The background as to the rec open space areas and how they were identified is not clear, excepting the area around the springs itself. And then we would also need a comprehensive plan text amendment to modify the density and intensity for the site. And you'll see, as staff brings forward the comprehensive plan amendments as a whole for the updates related to the ULDC, we're looking at changing the view... for the updates related to the ULDC, we're looking at changing the view as far as percentages of sites and what percentages should be set aside for each type of use. We'd like to set realistic maximums and allow those to be placed across a site as a whole. So that's what we're recommending here if the commission intends to pursue this P3 and the required amendments. At four dwelling units per acre, the site could yield 362 units. That is consistent with the P3 proposal that is before you. And at a floor area ratio of .2, the site could yield 710,812 square feet of commercial office, conference center, hotel space. If commission proceeds, staff does have additional recommendations we would like you to consider moving forward. We would like the future land use category to require minimum open space and maximum impervious surface area. Right now, the city's regulations don't address maximum impervious surface area. They only address lot coverage, which is building coverage. Doesn't include any of your parking lots, pavement areas. Those are not considered under our current codes, and we think it's appropriate to include maximum impervious surface areas. And this way, we can encourage developers to include partially pervious pavers, parking area set asides for overflow parking that do not involve paving over entire sites. So we would recommend 35% minimum open space. That would set aside 28.5% of Activity Center A as open space, and we'd recommend a maximum impervious surface area of 30%. In addition, low-impact development standards for stormwater should be required, especially in the Warm Mineral Springs area, and minimization of site disturbance regulations should be adopted to reduce earthmoving and tree removal. Maximum building height in Plan Community Development, which is the zoning district on all Activity Centers, is currently 70 feet. Given the nature of the surrounding area and the nature of the property itself, staff would recommend limiting the building heights in Activity Center 7 to 40 feet or three-story. With that, I would like to hold part two of the conversation as it is to Activity Center 7A. And staff would request some direction from the commission as to proceeding with any comprehensive plan amendments to Warm Mineral Springs Activity Center 7A. As you know, we do have a full plate with our Unified Land Development Code amendments, and those will require amendments to the future land use amendments. And if the commission provides that direction, we may be able to incorporate those into the current comp plan amendments, or if the timeline dictates, we can present them separately to the commission.
Clarification question for you, Ms. Barnes. The 7A area, is that the privately owned area that is within the boundaries of the city of Northport?
Correct.
Thank you. Questions, comments from my fellow commissioners? Commissioner McDowell?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. If you could go back, I'm sorry, these are not listed as page numbers, so I can't tell you a page number, but the title of it is Additional Staff Recommendations.
Yes, ma'am.
Towards the end, I think. If you could bring that back up. So you're using 81 and 1/2 acres for the total, which is the 20 acres of the springs and then the 62 acres as the open space future phases, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Why would you include 20 acres of protected land for this comp plan and ULDC? You can't build on it. You can't have buildings on it. You can't have residential on it. It's protected. So why would you even include it in that category thing?
Okay. So I'm going to flip to a different page in helping answer that question. The 81.59 acres is the entire site area. Regardless of any development intensity that the commission may wish to assign to the property as a whole, the protected areas around the springs will still prohibit placement of any buildings. Utilizing the 81.59 acres as Activity Center future land use provides the densities and intensities that would be necessary to achieve a P3 at the level that's being proposed, but would not allow placement of those buildings on any of the protected springs property. Just allows us to apply those densities and intensities across the entire site as a whole without reducing the acreage on which those numbers are based by 20 acres.
But if you, if you could put that back up real quick, the next one. Well, you could even use that one. But if you only had it with the 62 acres that is proposed for the P3 for the future phases, that would mean that the four dwelling units per acre would only be 248. And the FAR, which I'm still, after six years, trying to understand what the heck that is, but open space and impervious surface could also be reduced a little bit. I'm failing to understand why you would include that. I know it's the whole, whole property, but they're not able to build on it. It has nothing to do with the P3.
Staff is not recommending these changes if it pleased the commission. We're presenting what would be necessary in order to achieve the P3 presentation that was submitted to the city. Reducing the acreage on which the development intensity is based will reduce the yield. Now, alternatively, if the commission feels that we should base those on 61 acres versus 81.5 acres, we can certainly do that, but the density would need to increase and the intensity would need to increase if the commission desires to achieve that P3 plan as presented.
Okay. So Activity Center 7 in the comp plan, and when you're looking at the entire Activity Center, it is 7 and 7A. This is strictly for 7. But the totals are combined for 7 and 7A, or are they also separate?
They are separate. If you look at this, if you look at the development and intensity table, for example, low-density residential on this screen.
I'm sorry, where is this in the presentation? It's, again, no page number, so help me out.
It is under current CP, current comprehensive plan standards. Okay, so the numbers on the top portion of the row are to Activity Center 7 only, the Warm Mineral Springs property. And below that, where the A is indicated, those are the designations for Activity Center 7A. They are treated differently under the comprehensive plan, not just in the density and intensity table, but in the goals, objectives, and policies for those particular areas.
Since we're talking about changes to the comp plan, I am curious, why are we not talking about the changes to the comp plan if we were to remove the 62 acres of parkland, which changes the level of service? Why is this not part of our conversation today?
The, if the commission wishes us to bring recommendations back in that regard, we can certainly do so. We were directed to bring the higher-level conversation about what would be necessary to achieve this P3 plan. The property is in an Activity Center land use designation with the rec open space overlay on portions of the property. If the commission wishes to change the designation on this, on the 62 acres to some other future land use designation, staff can certainly bring that back if it's commission's desire.
The reason why I'm asking that is this is the comp plan, and the comp plan specifically states that we're supposed to keep a level of service for public parklands. And according to our parks master plan, Warm Mineral Springs, the total 81 acres or 82 acres is part of the parkland to help us achieve the level of service of 10 acres or eight acres, depending on which document you use, to maintain the level of service. Removing that 62 acres is going to considerably change the level of service in the comp plan and all of the attached fingered documents, the parks master plan, the Warm Mineral Springs master plan, the Camoin Study, the, everything is all entwined and.
Well, let's just sort of bring it back for a minute because I think what you're pointing out is we have yet another conflict in our documents in terms of how we are considering this property. And what I would like to suggest, Commissioner, you bring up an excellent point in terms of this property being within the parks and rec level of service calculation. Let's, if I may suggest to my fellow commissioners that we deal with that when we have a parks conversation and what adjustments might need to be made to that plan as we consider this property a future land use of Activity Center.
And I hear what you're saying, but if we are to consider this P3, we have to look at all of the tentacles, and that is a huge part of it, the 62 acres of parkland. If you remove it and we have a discussion later, well, then we're still going to be out of compliance and we're going against everything that all of these other documents are talking about.
Well, I think we're prepared to talk about the Activity Center portion of those adjustments today. We can certainly suggest when we have a parks and rec conversation. That is a much, much broader conversation that's beyond the scope of what we.
But this is part of the comp plan discussion that is related to the P3. But I, we're going around in circles, and I hear what you're saying. If I may. What we're talking about today, this was a very high-level discussion regarding the changes that would be required to the comp plan, not to any other document, to the comp plan, if the commission wants to accommodate the P3 that has been proposed. Recognizing we have other documents that this, these changes might conflict with. However, keep in mind, this comprehensive plan is statutory. Your parks plan is not. The Camoin Study is not. You can make decisions on the dais that conflict with those plans without legal jeopardy because they're not codified, they're not statutorily required, they're not your comp plan. You must, according to state law, be in compliance with your comprehensive plan. Recognizing that we may need to make level of service changes, we may need to, we'll need to look at all of that. What we're talking about today is the comprehensive plan and whether we start down that road. Looking at the comprehensive plan would then trigger us looking at the other plans that the city has.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
The comprehensive plan states the adopted level of service is 10 acres of park and open space per 1,000 population. It's in the comp plan. So that's why I'm saying, why isn't this included? Well, we would look at those calculations, but I think it's been a while since the city actually looked at what their level of service is that they're providing now and how it's been calculated. So I think that's work that needs to be done regardless. And I don't, we don't have an answer today as to how removing this would affect that level of service. We may be already out of compliance. We don't know because we haven't done that calculation. So that's just work that needs to be done. We're recognizing that it needs to be done, but what we're looking at today is specifically the changes that would be required on this property in order to accommodate it and whether you want us to move forward to even kick the work off.
Why, please.
I appreciate that we're going to have a future conversation about it, but since my understanding is we were here to talk about the comp plan and how a P3 would affect the comp plan, and this is one component of that. So that's why I wanted to bring it up and find out, when are we going to have that conversation? Because if we're going to be changing the comp plan and we're already behind the eight ball, not only for the comp plan, but our parks master plan, by removing 62 acres of designated parkland is going to put us even further behind the eight ball, and that concerns me. So I think I've used my 10 minutes, so I'll yield the floor, and I do hope I will get a second round. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Stokes?
Can you bring up on the screen the percentages of open space? Just add some questions.
Under the current plan, Commissioner Stokes, or what we would be proposing?
No, go back. Forward, I'm.
These numbers are so helpful. These numbers are so helpful.
Forward, still.
Forward still.
There. Okay, one more. Let me just, yeah. Okay, there we go. In considering the open space minimum, the springs itself, in, since you are looking at this as 81.59 acres, is part of that, the springs itself considered open space?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So basically, if the 20 rough acres were separated out, well, including it means that, as I see it, the balance of the 60-some-odd acres would be more highly dense and have less open space, since a big chunk of the 20 acres that consists of the springs itself is considered open space and allocated towards part of this 35. So again, maybe a reason why looking at the 60 acres separately would be more beneficial, would give us a better perspective on what the real open space area would be in that developable area. Because the springs is not going to be touched, but I'd like to understand better how dense that other 60 acres of development's going to be, how much open space is going to be in there, and the proximity of any building to the springs itself. Because, in my opinion, 400 feet is slightly more than a football field, which isn't that much space, yet there's 60-some-odd acres to work with. I do appreciate the idea of developing and broadening the use of this Activity Center so more people enjoy it. I'm all about protecting these springs, and it seems to me that there's somewhere in between here that can make sense so that the springs are protected and its integrity is protected, and at the same time, it can be developed, this other 60 acres, in a fashion that provides an incentive for a partner, but at the same time, in no way jeopardizes these springs. So, you know, the devil's in the details here. I'd love to see this 62 acres better defined and so people could have a real clear understanding of what percentage of that 60 acres is going to be built on.
Commissioner Stokes, to your comment about the 400-foot separation, the red line around the springs is from where that is measured. So you've got that seven-acre buffer area around the springs plus that 400 feet until you get to any residential development. So I wanted to clarify that. And I wanted to reiterate, staff is here to have the high-level conversation and And I wanted to reiterate, staff is here to have the high level conversation and receive direction from the Commission as to, A, whether you're ready to proceed with any amendments to the future land use element to accommodate this proposed project. And once staff receives that direction, we will certainly be looking at all of the other elements in the comprehensive plan to ensure any changes we make to the future land use element that would impact or require amendments to other elements, the conservation element, the parks element, et cetera, we would look at, at that time that Commission provides us a direction to proceed.
That's, I mean, my biggest concern is if we agree with this change and proposed amendment, that in no way opens the door to automatic approvals when there's still a whole lot of hurdles yet to go through in terms of, you know, everything from geological to historical to environmental studies. The last thing I'd like to see is us change this to the point where we then later can, can't come back and say, no. And, and, and that is a big concern of mine. What order we're doing this in.
Right.
I have no problem as long as every single I is dotted and T is crossed. This, and I believe, don't get me wrong, I do believe this is the intention of our partner, our proposed partner, I do believe it's the intention of the Commission and staff as well, to preserve these springs, to make absolutely sure they are taken care of. But there's a lot of misinformation, a lot of misunderstandings, and I don't want to make a decision here today that restricts our ability to respond to these other hurdles that have to yet be met before this project can be approved.
I would just, quiet, please. I would just add a footnote to what Commissioner Stokes mentioned. My preference would be to, to make our, I'll call them guidelines for lack of a better word, more restrictive than maybe even our vision is because that would force a trip back to this body if we wanted to do something different. So that's sort of how I'm, I'm leaning at this point, but I'm out of order. So Commissioner Emmerich, you wanted to speak?
Go ahead, Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, thank you. No decision that the Commission makes today is binding. The process that would be involved is going to, is going to require multiple public hearings. The first step would be direction from the Commission to look at the future land use element, incorporate what we presented to you today or a scaled back version of density and intensity, and then we'll bring that comprehensive plan amendment back to you all for consideration at a first reading. Following the first reading, that comprehensive plan amendment is transmitted to the state for review. What you're seeing in front of you today is very high level. We haven't presented all of the goals, objectives and policies that are currently in the comprehensive plan that apply to Warm Mineral Springs. We gave you a high level overview of the seven acres set aside, the 400 foot buffer. There's plenty of language about archaeological preservation, manatee protection, et cetera, in the current comprehensive plan policies. We're talking about high level here today. So first step, direction from Commission. Second step, public hearing for first reading to transmit to the state for review. The state review involves the Department of Economic Opportunity, Community Planning, involves FDIP, involves Southwest Florida Water Management District. They all have an opportunity to comment on the amendment that the city would submit and they will either provide a letter of no comment or objectives, objections, recommendations and comments to the city that will need to be responded to prior to second reading. We get through that state transmittal process, the comp plan amendments would come back to you all for consideration on a second reading for adoption. The next step would be modifying the Unified Land Development Code provisions for this particular Activity Center to match the comprehensive plan and then to also incorporate those additional regulations that the Commission would desire to impose upon this particular area, like your low impact development stormwater regulations, your minimization of site disturbance, pre-preservation, requiring native plantings, which was also a staff recommendation that I didn't catch on, but was included in the slides. So then there's still the P3 partnership to be considered, which would likely be going through negotiations between the developer, the city manager and the Commission while all of the planning and regulatory framework discussion is happening in the background. So I hope that helps you to know that what you decide today does not make, does not create a condition that this is written in stone.
Barnes, I appreciate it because it's not just for my clarification, it's for the clarification of everybody out here. This was very helpful because we want all folks in this community to understand how carefully we'll proceed with this, that all these things are going to be considered. And sometimes decisions go one way, sometimes they go the other, but this Commission intends to follow that proper process and I think it's helpful for you to have been able to explain some of that so people realize it's just not, okay, let's okay this and off we go. There's a lot of hurdles to overcome, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
City Manager, did you want to add on to this before I turn to Commissioner Emmerich?
Sure, just jump line, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say quickly, and thanks for that explanation, Ms. Barnes, that yes, the goal of today-
I'm going to clear the room if it continues. If you must talk, please go out into the foyer and have your conversation, but quiet in here, please. Thank you.
The goal of today was just truly to match the alignment of the code with what we've seen so far that has been put in front of us. The decisions on what that ultimately will look like will be decided at a later point in time, but in order for you to have a proposal in front of you and then for someone to say, well, that doesn't even match what the code is that they can do right now, then we have to get some direction so we can make some progress towards meeting the vision that you want with the vision of the developer. So the context, I just want to make sure is clear that we as staff are just providing guidance to sort of bring the two closer together.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Emmerich, you're on.
All right. This is, this is my understanding of this process. You brought up the picture of the proposal. Can you bring that up again, please, of what that proposal looked like?
Commissioner Emmerich, this view or this view?
Yeah, that one there. Because this is what has been proposed with possible amenities and everything on that. What we're doing today is looking at the policies that we have in place and changing them to possibly be able to allow to have this in the future by changing our codes. It's not necessarily going to go that route because we can swap and change, but it allows any of those pieces of those puzzles to be able to be used. They can be downsized, but this is pretty much the most robust proposal that we have to this day. We have other ones that have come in that may not be as robust, but it still opens up the door to where we can pick and choose what amenities we would like in there as a Commission, as a community, and not necessarily have to use 100% of this design because it hasn't been negotiated yet. We're just on the front door knocking. This is, what I'm saying is, is this could happen, but most likely may not in the future. But it's allowable and that's what we need to get fixed to where we can look at our options and look at all of our options, not just with blinders on, with narrow sight in this, but with all of ours. It needs to be done and it needs to be done right and I've said that a thousand times. So this is step one.
Yes, Commissioner Emmerich. And something else that is important to note is the comprehensive plan is your broad framework of your maximums that are allowable. Should the Commission want to impose stricter limitations in the Unified Land Development Code as you move through the process, you can do so. The difference between the two documents are, the comprehensive plan's your framework and your maximums. The Unified Land Development Code can be less, can be more restrictive, not less restrictive. So for example, if you wanted to include in the comprehensive plan a limitation of four dwelling units per acre, you could further limit in your Unified Land Development Code and only allow three units per acre unless a waiver or a modification is approved for a particular project. So when you think about comp plan, big picture, maximums, understanding that you can further limit in your Unified Land Development Code.
Right, because you don't want to start out smaller if somebody has the designs of something bigger or you're just closing the door on options. The more restrictions you put out there, the less interest you may have.
Correct. And, and when you further limit in a Unified Land Development Code, the Commission has discretion to modify those requirements or waive certain provisions. If the regulatory, if the regulatory provisions are in the comprehensive plan, you have no authority to waive them. The only way you can change them is through a comprehensive plan text amendment, which requires state review and takes a minimum of four to six months to process.
Okay. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor White.
Yes, could you bring up slide seven? It's the aerial view again with the big red circle there. I think it's, yes. The, the 22 acres that we refer to as being the area that will remain untouched or that's, is that, that goes beyond that circle, doesn't it? Does it also include where the, currently the old buildings are? Is that part of the 20, because you keep saying seven acres, but is that just immediately around the spring?
I'm referencing the comprehensive plan provisions. The comprehensive plan discusses a 7.02 acre conservation area around the springs itself. I believe the 20 acres is part of the master plan document that envisions that 20 acres being set aside for the springs and the associated springs-related improvements.
Okay, but that does include, because I do have that 2019 plan, that did include the, the parking lot and the 22 acres, didn't it? And those, the buildings that are currently still there?
From the master plan, yes.
Yes, okay. So that is the 22 acre. So there's already structures and improvements that have been made to that 22 acres, but you're saying what's in that ring would not have improvements?
Correct.
Okay. And also looking at that, and looking at the plan that Commissioner Emmerich wanted, brought up, the proposed hotel, and again, these, this is just a idea, it would go beyond that ring. No, no, you could stay on that, that page. Well, yeah, because if you compare the two, that's good. That ring of trees there, that's where the Wellness Center is proposed, behind that. Right. And then also, if you can go back to the other one, where the hotel is proposed to be, that would be beyond that red line and there's like a little storage shed there now in that, in that area.
So if you can see my cursor, the hotel's proposed north of that conservation area-
Right.
And the Wellness Center is proposed east of that conservation area.
Right. Okay. And then I know a lot of people have concerns about that, the condo thing, and again, that's just, that's the proposal, that what could possibly go there, but there's also, if you can go back to his drawing page there, to see that there's a whole swath of, well, I guess that's okay. Yeah, there's a whole swath of, of trees. That is the, what I refer to as the tree line, when you're at the springs and you're looking east, you don't see anything beyond that because there's a tree line. And the, the idea is to bring in walking paths and a lot of the things that people had discussed, they wanted to see three years ago, but on a more organized fashion, to actually have those things there. So then that, those proposed units, and that's what you're talking about, the 270 single family unit, we're not talking about houses necessarily.
Higher density.
Higher density. So they, right, so they could be in the form of just condo units, so not for people to think that's going to be houses with driveways and, and all of, all of that in there. I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? I saw you pushing Commissioner McDowell, but you haven't popped up, so why don't you, oh, there you are, go ahead.
In between today and when we have first reading, if we approve any changes to this comp plan, will we be having a community conversation to the potential changes?
If the Commission directs staff to have a separate workshop or special meeting to discuss the amendments, we can certainly do so. We're workshopping today to get that direction. We would incorporate whatever changes Commission gains consensus on today and we can certainly schedule a separate workshop to get into all of the specific details, not just our high level conversation that we're having today.
I appreciate that, but I was more looking for community conversations because to me, workshops and Commission meetings are totally separate, totally different. It's a different animal than a community conversation. To me, a community conversation is give and take, listening and hearing and, and questioning and answering and, and that kind of thing, as opposed to a Commission meeting where the citizens come up here for three minutes, speak, but we cannot answer their questions. I'm wondering if we are going to have a community conversation about the changes to the comp plan, about Warm Mineral Springs.
Thank you, Commissioner McDowell. So the city staff and myself, we will have any conversations to fulfill the community engagement requirements that we mentioned earlier to make sure that all the citizens' voices are heard in the process. Can I tell you when that will be in the process? Not at this point, as we pull together a timeline as we go through the process that is going through a unique P3 code, but I can assure you that it will occur.
And, and I, I would hopefully assume that there would be a community conversation regarding the P3. My question is, will we be having a community conversation about changes to the comp plan? We have to have community conversations to the comp plan when we're going through the ears process. So that's why I'm asking, are we going to have a community conversation for the comp plan?
Again, we will have all conversations necessary for the community comp plan that are necessary in the process, ma'am.
That would be a yes.
Yes, ma'am. Since we have the comp plan that is very uniquely combined with other studies, and I get the other studies are not statutory, but we spent a lot of time, energy and money on the Warm Mineral Springs Master Plan, on the Parks Master Plan and the Camoin Study, and I am wondering, when will those be addressed? Because they, they are integral and it is important, especially when we're talking about a substantial portion of our parkland open space of 62 acres.
Commissioner McDowell, that would be at the discretion of the Commission. The, the documents you mentioned, the Parks Master Plan, the Camoin Study, those are visioning documents, they are not regulatory. If the Commission chooses that, to update those based on whatever changes are made to the comprehensive plan, the Commission can certainly do so. They are not necessarily required to be updated under the Community Planning Act.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes, I'm assuming, always dangerous, but I'm assuming that this information was developed in conjunction with or discussed with our economic development team. Am I correct? Am I correct in that assumption?
The Economic Development Team, I know, has had conversations with the P3 proposer. We have had meetings with Economic Development. Again, we made some assumptions, and those may be refined as we move through the P3 negotiations as far as the development yield, but I do know that the Economic Development Department is on board with creating a destination at Warm Mineral Springs and making this activity center the best it can be for the benefit of the city and for the community and visitors to the city.
Great, thank you for that. I'm not seeing anything else. Would you like us to go through your decision points for a consensus? What do you need from us at this point to proceed?
Mayor Langdon, what we would need at this point is a direction from the Commission to proceed with the preparation of a comprehensive plan amendment to help realize the vision of the P3 proposed plan, and any input that the Commission wishes to provide or direction as to maximum density, maximum intensity, the impervious surface area and open space requirements that we have presented to you today.
Okay. Who's ready to specifically give that input?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner.
Since it's going to become part of our conversation, FAR floor area ratio, the maximum is 710,000 square feet. Explain floor area ratio for the millionth time to me, and I am so grateful for your indulgence.
Floor area ratio is a percentage of the property which can include square footage, in this case, non-residential square footage.
Say it again, slow.
So, if you have an acre of property and your floor area ratio is one, you can have an acre of building, 43,560 square feet. Now, that acre of building square footage is not going to create a situation where the whole site is covered with building, because you can go up four stories or seven stories. So, it's a ratio of the amount of building square footage as to the acreage of a property.
That include like parking lots, does that, is that just like retail space, or is it the entire building requirement space?
The entire building square footage, only building square footage. Your parking areas would be included in that impervious surface area percentage that we're recommending. So, you would not only have your floor area limitation, you would have your impervious surface area limitation as well.
Thank you. Hopefully, that was good enough that it will be retained for the next time we talk about FARs. Thank you.
I'll pop in here for a minute. So, I'm looking at your slide, Ms. Barnes, on the maximum, the residential maximum density, intensity. As I go through that, currently, where we specify 52%, can be low-intensity residential. I'll give my input, I think that should be zero. Residential medium, I did some back of the napkin calculations, and when I looked at, I was looking at that condo area of the current proposal. Where's my math? Hopefully, I can remember it. I think when I used the 20, the 300 units and the 18 acres specified in that plan, I came up with 319 units per acre, and I think our low density is currently 14. Medium density is 15?
10.
10, and high density is 15. So, I would, I'm inclined to go with the high density with the assurance that in our ULDC, when we get further along this process, we can make the ULDC more restrictive. Do I understand you correctly on that?
We do intend to incorporate some provisions in the ULDC that minimizes residential and the activity centers. The thought process behind the four dwelling units per acre recommended here was to not base the number of units that could be yielded on the area that was set aside for residential. This would cap the residential at 362 units, and again, you could make that more restrictive in the ULDC if you wish to do so. Going with the high-density calculation, we'd actually have to keep incorporating those percentages of what percentage of the site can be used for residential versus commercial versus office, and those are very burdensome as far as understanding from the general public, the development community, and keeping track of all of those calculations. By limiting that to four units per acre, they can't say, oh, well, we, we, we want to add an acre to our 18, and then we'll yield 400 units instead.
I get it.
We're calculating across the development site as a whole, and they can cluster, and we would encourage them to cluster, and that's part of the incorporation of the impervious surface area maximum, is to push for that clustering, to push for minimizing your parking lots and using new technology for gridlock, pervious parking pavers, so that you can have that overflow parking without paving the whole, the whole site.
And the beauty of higher density is that we're not covering as much land mass with the amount, so, although I think people tend to sort of take a deep breath when we talk about density, there is a benefit to that, to the environment versus sprawl, so I just wanted to put that out there. So, commercial office, clarify for me again, the slide we're looking at, the density, intensity maximums?
The FAR maximum would be .2, and the maximum non-residential yield would be 710,812 square feet, and, you know, we're trying to move toward not segregating retail versus office. If it's a non-residential use, then it would be allowed under that FAR limitation.
Okay. So, looking at the development intensity. So, looking at minimum open space requirement, does anyone have a feel for what they would want to set as a maximum in the comprehensive plan?
That's minimal.
I'm sorry, minimum.
Yeah, I'm going to probably put a big cog in this whole conversation right here and right now. Changes to the comp plan are not something I am in favor of, and I understand that we are trying to get the comp plan changed so staff knows how to proceed with P3, and that we are trying to accommodate our comp plan to accommodate a P3. To me, that's kind of backwards. I also have a very serious problem with including the 20 acres of Phase 1 of our master plan in these calculations. I, I voted for the P3 that was presented to us because we were presented with two options. I took the option that I thought was better, but by absolutely no means do I think that is best. The master plan that we have had in place, and that other commissioners that are sitting up here, that have sat up here, have unilaterally said they wanted to keep it less intrusive, as least intrusive as possible, to keep it as green as possible. The intention was to keep it natural, and I understand that commissions change, and I understand procedures and things change, but there has to be a happy medium with that. I'm not talking about the 20 acres for Phase 1. That has to be done, does not mean it has to be done now. We, we got to figure out how we're going to pay for Phase 1, and I understand that's why we brought in a P3, but there are other options still available. Phase 2 is what I am focusing on, and that is why we are here discussing these comp plan changes, is because of Phase 2, which is that 62 acres. I'm looking for a compromise to keeping it natural and serene to full development, and, and I know that there's got to be a compromise out there. I don't know what that looks like, but I, I'm not seeing it, and therefore, I cannot approve any comp plan changes until we really have a larger conversation.
I want to clarify some language, though, Commissioner. You said full development. When I look at the current P3 proposal, about a third of that 60 acres is designated as sort of, call it open space, but natural, pristine space. So, I want us to be careful with our language, because when we say things like full development, people envision 60 acres paved with buildings on it, so let's just be careful. I think what we're trying to do today is at a very high level, give staff some guidance in terms of comprehensive plans, changes that they need in order to be able in good faith to pursue a P3 proposal. And there's still a lot of work to be done in terms of what it would look like and how big, what sections are, but we need to give staff some direction so that they can just kind of put the foundation in place for a P3 conversation.
If we give them the maximums, that is allowing those...
Or the minimums.
Or the minimums, but open space, I believe, is only a minimum. It can, it has to, it, open space has to have this amount, but density could be as high as that amount, and that is where I'm not able to go at this point, especially when you're calculating everything on that 81 acres. 20 acres of that is totally undevelopable, so if you were to take and reduce that to the 62 acres, that reduces the density, it reduces the FAR, keep the minimum open space, and it also then would reduce the maximum of impervious surface.
I, are you done? Commissioner Emmerich?
Right, I'm going by what Commissioner McDowell just said. She wants a happy medium between full development and, you know, as least likely development as possible, but we've also got to remember, we've been on this pay-as-you-go kick for 10, 12 years, and we're at where we're at right now because of that. Okay, we have no money to go ahead and refurbish the buildings. Now, we've had a storm come through, we're scratching, trying to get it back open again. The best thing for the springs is to have a partnership going forward. It doesn't have to be a full conglomerate development, it could be pieces of that, but without changing this process, we won't know what's available out there. We will have no clue whatsoever. We can just go right back and say, hey, let's save our pennies, do this, that and the other, but this is something that should have been done when we were partnerships with the county. They may have seen something a hell of a lot better than what we saw back then, because we're stuck with it, we're working with it, and this is what we got. So, I mean, I'm happy with the numbers that they gave, because the reason being is, that's the biggest it can be. We can always downsize from there. So, if we go with these numbers, you can disagree all you want, shake your head, but it's, it's still the same thing. It benefits all of the Northport taxpayers, and this is something that we got to start looking at. So, that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stokes?
As I see it, we're not voting on a comp plan change, comprehensive plan change here. All we're doing is attempting to give some guidance to staff. So, with that said, I do concur with Commissioner McDowell that I, and you were asking for suggestions as to what we might guide them on, I'd like to see on this chart that's up there now that everyone can see, we look at open space minimum, I'd like, I don't have a problem with those numbers, those percentages, as long as they're applicable to the 60 acres exclusive of the springs. That forces us more open space overall, and it doesn't restrict us in any way, shape or form from entertaining a P3. Truthfully, I do believe that the end result of all this, if it comes to pass, will probably not closely resemble or identically resemble what we're seeing here. There is a middle ground to be made. Again, we're not changing the comprehensive plan today, we're just trying to provide some guidance to staff so they can come back and make some proposals, which City Manager has already said will be made available and will include the community in, so I don't really see a problem going forward. I'd love to see the 35% open space minimum be applicable to the 60 acres rather than the entire 81. I mean, that's my opinion.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, that's a good suggestion. I'm, I'm happy that there is being proposed an open space minimum. We don't have that for anything else, and, and the impervious surface too. We don't have that at all for anything. So, the fact that that's even being considered here, I think, shows the level of consideration that we're having for what we're dealing with. I like the idea of having that only pertain the open space to the 62 acres that were always, as had been mentioned, destined to be made into something. That's, that's why we, we did acquire it. I know I've heard the word preservation, it wasn't, it wasn't acquired for preservation. I know we like to think that, and conversations that I've had, and if anybody knows who I am, and I think a lot of people don't unfortunately, because we have so many new people here, but, you know, I have been at the environmental fight for decades, literally, and have had my share of people who don't like me because of that, so there's nothing that I would ever do that would compromise what, what this is, but I remember those discussions. I remember when we did have someone from, Mr. Hale can, will know this, we did have somebody here when we were annexing that in, and I did host him at my house for dinner because he needed a place to go before the meeting, so I was involved with all of that, but preservation was never the word coming into the reason for annexation. It was always to maximize the use of that, that property for people to, to enjoy, and, you know, technically, if you want to preserve it, then that means nobody should even be swimming in, in that lake, if you want to be technical about it. I have researched the springs that we have, but then we don't want to use preserve, we want to use protection, and protection means you still have use of something, but you are going to do it with, with limitations. There's also been a lot of conversations about the other spring areas in the state, Waukeahatchee, which is a freshwater spring being taken over, but I suggest you do research on that. I know those places, Silver Springs and even Cypress Gardens, I know that's not a spring, but I always call that my trifecta, because I've been going to those places for 30 years, and they have, all of them had to turn those places over because they weren't turning a profit. They weren't able to keep up with the... They weren't able to keep up with the upkeep until they brought something into it. If you haven't been to Waukeahatchee, I suggest you go there because they have a Buccaneer Bay, they call now, it's a big beach area. They had to do that. I just go there to see the mermaids, but that's not something that appealed to people anymore. So they had to do something else. And that's what I see this as, as being. So, um, I'm sorry, I went off on a tangent there, but getting back to the open space, I like the idea of having that apply to the, the 62 acres that were going to be made into something. And that would maximize that, that open space percentage.
Yeah, final comments for me. I've, I've long felt that the biggest risk to our warm mineral springs is that it doesn't deliver more value to more citizens who live in the city and is a significant net drain on the city rather than a net gain for the city, which again, my understanding, I wasn't here as long as Vice Mayor, but my understanding was that the acquisition of that property was to be developed conservatively to deliver value to the city. So you don't have to like it, but those are the facts. And again, the biggest risk to the springs is that we do nothing. There are just so many examples that the, the area of the country I come, come from, I saw a lot, saw a lot of towns and cities in our area who got built out, didn't have sufficient income to the city and found themselves in the position of dramatically increasing taxes, property taxes on residents and/or selling their parkland. And I don't want this city to get to that point in 15 or 20 years. And maintaining a property like warm mineral springs, I mean, two or three years ago, when we entertained the rehabbing of the buildings on the 23 acres, we thought it was going to cost us nine million. We scraped that together and then when, when we went out for bid, it was 18 million. And that changes the dynamics quite a bit. So, um, that's sort of the end of my pontificating. I also would find it very, very helpful to look at these numbers based on the 62 acres rather than the whole parcel. It really muddies the waters for me and makes it much more difficult to me to, for me to visualize what's happening on the 62 acres. And it could result in our approving a, a level of development that none of us are comfortable with. So given that input, what would you recommend as a next step?
So essentially, the, the next step really would be for the commission to give us direction to go back and start working on some things. And that would include alternatives and options to incorporate some of the things that you've talked about today. Also, um, we could work on at least some high level thoughts on how we could further implement these goals through the ULDC. But bearing in mind that what you, the direction that you give us today on this, if you say go forth, do work on these, but also bring back the, some options with some of the changes that you've talked about today. During that time, it's going to be months before you see this again, because it, it takes us months to do these things. And in the meantime, the P three process will be going forward with that competitive process that the city manager has discussed. We're in those discussions as well, so we're going to be hearing, you know, that kind of thing. If there are, if the commission makes changes or talks with a, a P three proposer in the meantime, before we bring this back, and it looks like it's changing directions or it's going one way, we, we have time to modify that before we bring it back to you. So that when it does come back, it's reflective of whatever it is that the commission is, is considering at that time. So, you know, just bear that in mind. We, we will have alternatives for you, but we will also have our, our ears to the ground so that if, in, in between now and then, the commission, you know, weaves or zigs or zags, we'll be able to respond to that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is at a starting point, um, we should either approve or not the intensity levels and information in this proposal because it supports the current and only high level plan we have in front of us.
I would say you're not actually approving that.
Just providing some input.
You are, you are giving direction to staff.
Right.
Your, what you would do today is consensus for direction to staff to go back and begin working on comprehensive plan changes to incorporate not only the, the P three proposal that is being, that's before you, but also the things that you've discussed today. And, you know, also keep in mind any changes that may result there between now and then. And we'll bring that whole package to you at a future date, but it will be a while.
Okay, great. Um, one last comment, Commissioner McDowell.
Um, the FAR, um, that 20%, what would that number look like if it was 62 acres?
We joke a lot about how planners don't do math. If we did, we would be engineers.
Give me your best estimate or maybe somebody else, maybe somebody from finance might be.
I don't know.
The only reason why I said finances is because they're good with math.
And, and that's something too. I mean, you, you've asked today that we bring you numbers for what it would look like on the 60 acres. We'll have that calculation at that time, but also what it would look like if we kept the 20 acres but increased the amount of open space required or, or, there are different ways to fix that issue.
Commissioner McDowell, um, on 61 acres, 531,432 square feet.
500.
31,432 square feet.
All right. You know, if, if you guys are looking for direction, um, I already stated where I was. The way that it says now with the 81 and a half acres for Activity Center seven, staff recommended changes, I already said I could not approve that. Because it's including that 20 acres. If we can give staff direction to remove the 20 acres, that would reduce the four dwelling units down to 248, it would reduce the FAR down to that 500,000 square foot, keep your open space at the 35%. Um, and then the impervious surface would be reduced. You know, I, I, I understand you guys are trying to get to the P three requirements to be captured into the comp plan, but you're also looking for direction on things that we as a commissioner are looking for as the best possible P three and the best possible development that could be had. So I'm just throwing that out as conversation and Mayor, I'll let you just take it over.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm going to go for a consensus, knowing that it's going to fail, but at least it will give staff some direction in terms of what our thoughts are today. So I'm going to make a consensus that we give direction to staff to proceed with the numbers we see in this plan because it, it supports a reasonable P three proposal with the understanding that before it comes back to us for an official vote, we'll, we'll see these numbers based on the 62 acres so that we have a, a really better idea of what it's going to look like. So what do you think? Commissioner Emmerich.
I'd be a yes on that.
Yep, Vice Mayor.
I'd be a yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm a no.
Okay, do you want to comment on that?
I do. I think we ought to give direction to, uh, staff to exclude the 20 acres and come back with information based on that because, um, I'm not comfortable with including these percentages of open space and, um, at, at the present level inclusive of the 81 acres. I just don't think that 20 acres of the springs should be included in the P three analysis. I mean, it fits together as a whole package, I get, but, you know, I'm good with giving them guidance, but why waste our time to come back to see the same numbers we see? I want to see what it looks like without the 20 acres.
Well, I just want to remind you, the consensus included that before it comes back to us for decision, we sort of see the picture just based on the 62 acres. So we would not see the same numbers again.
Yeah, that excluded the 21 acres.
Correct, correct.
So we do have a question.
Okay.
Um, if we come back to you at four units per acre at 61 acres, that will preclude the current P three. You will not be able to achieve the current P three proposal that's in front of you. So what our, what the purpose was for it to come before you today was to show you what it would take in the comp plan to meet that P three. So if we go back and only bring forward what it would require or the, the change you're saying today, four units per acre at 81 acres, bear in mind, the P three that's before you exceeds that. So would you want us to look at what density would be required on those 61 acres to achieve the P three proposal that is in front of you today?
Yes.
So that you still have the option of looking at that P three as it, as it has been presented?
Mm-hmm. I would say.
No, you, what, what I was being, what we were hearing was four dwelling units per acre on, on 60 acres.
Right. No, I, I, that certainly wasn't my intention. I was, I clearly stated for the current proposal, so I'm not even a planner, I'm a marketer, so my math skills are even more in question. But I did a back of the napkin calculation based on the current P three proposal and I saw 300 units on 18 acres, which wound up being 19 units per acre at that level. No?
No, the, the, the density is calculated across, and this is for any development, e- every development we do.
The entire parcel.
It's, right, which is why it's, it's more complicated to remove the 20 acres because that's not typically how we calculate density.
Right.
Um, so if we do the, if we do take out the 20 unit, or 20 acres, then the density would be calculated across the entirety of the remainder of the property, 60 some odd acres. Um, so, but it would be, in order to achieve the number of units that are included in the current proposal, it would need to be more than four units per acre. So my question was, did you want us to bring back what that density would look like on that 61 acres?
Yes.
Can I throw out a suggestion, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
So currently our comp plan has Activity Center seven, Activity Center seven A. Why not just create an Activity Center seven B? Seven being the springs, seven A being that rezone parcel that's owned private property, and then seven B be the 62 acres. That way then you can keep all those calculations separate.
Does that make sense? We, we can certainly attempt to bring that back. The only concern that I would have in that approach is the, the restaurant component, the phase one buildings as they exist and what floor area ratio we would want to assign to the 20 acres.
Would exist today, I would think.
And, you know, and then considering the placement of that restaurant component as proposed in the P three, um, you know, where, where is the line? And how do we make sure that we provide an FAR calculation that is not going to hamstring the commission as they move forward with this P three proposal, whether it be the most recent presentation or another? And I'd just like to reiterate, we can be more restrictive in the land development regulations, the Unified Land Development Code than we are in the comprehensive plan. So as the commission moves through all of these interacting processes, if your maximums in the comp plan are set and you feel later on that you want to further restrict development, you can do that through your Unified Land Development Code provisions.
Well, where, where, where we're at, and my concern is we're giving you unclear development of input, what I'm, what I'm hearing is there is a strong desire on the part of this commission to see the picture based on the 60 acres. Um, and I'm really less concerned with the current, you know, four homes per acre than I am what does the footprint and density look like to support a P three proposal on 60 acres? So however you can come back with that, you had a three to two, so you don't have really overwhelming direction on how to proceed. Uh, my best advice would be to use those 60 acres and sort of come back with some numbers. What would it look like to support that current P three in terms of footprint and density for the different types of development on 60 acres? And I think that would give us, that would put this commission in a much better position to give you direction on how we'd like to move forward. Does that make sense?
We can, we can get there, we can figure it out.
Okay.
Yes, we'll, we'll bring back some options.
It shouldn't take months, I, I wouldn't hope.
Well, it just, keeping in mind the other work that we are also doing concurrently, it will take months to get it back to you for a first reading.
But it would anyway, right?
Yes.
So with this consensus that we really don't have a consensus on.
Right.
You're bringing, you're going to come back with comp plan changes for first reading?
No, ma'am, we're going to come back with some.
I just want to make sure we're.
We're going to come back with some additional options and other possible approaches for commission to consider before we bring an ordinance back to you all.
Yes.
So we'll have a do-over in a few months.
You will, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you everyone for your patience.
We got to go to seven A now.
Yep, yep. But I just want to say a lot of deep information here and I appreciate your presence of your patience as we go through it. Okay, next topic you're looking for direction on.
Uh, yes, Mayor. Activity Center seven A is the privately owned portion of property in the Activity Center seven area. That property, that Activity Center seven A was established in 2015 by ordinance 2015-02. Now that, uh, that ordinance outlined comprehensive plan limitations for density and intensity in the seven A area only. 10 units an acre on 30% of the property was permissible. Point six FAR on 90% of the property was permissible and 20% was to be set aside for recreation open space. Now, under those calculations, the density limitation, the number of units per acre would be, um, 10, which equates to 47 dwelling units. The commercial and office component was limited to 371,393 and the open space required was 5.64 acres. Now, in one of the goals, objectives and policies under seven A, the minimum open space was set at 20%, um, which you can see, if you can have 90% commercial and office, how can you have 20% open space? So we've got some internal conflicts that need to be addressed as well as some issues with the prior approvals that were granted. At the commission meeting where the comprehensive plan provisions were established for seven A, the item that immediately followed was ordinance 20- A, the item that immediately followed was ordinance 2015-03, which rezoned the property to P C D. Now, that rezoning ordinance included limitations on density and intensity, which is considered contract zoning and is illegal in Florida. Furthermore, it granted a development master plan approval on this property with no expiration date. So we have some issues that should be addressed so that it is clear what is permissible on So staff put together some suggestions for modifying the density and intensity standards for Seven A to create a condition where the allowable maximums are consistent with that rezoning approval that was made in conflict with the comprehensive plan. So at five units an acre on the fifteen-point-six acres in Seven A, the maximum density would maximum dwelling units would be seventy-eight, and at a floor-area ratio of point-two, the three hundred and sixty-nine thousand square feet that was approved in the rezoning ordinance could be accommodated. In addition, staff would recommend the same limitations as we proposed in Activity Center Seven with the open space minimums and the impervious surface area maximums, as well as requiring the native landscaping, the low-impact design standards, minimization of site disturbance, and the maximum building height of forty feet. And today, we're just seeking direction from the commission as to whether to proceed with these amendments to Activity Center Seven A's density and intensity and incorporate those additional minimum open space requirements and maximum impervious surface area requirements.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, um, when you're talking about the density and intensity maximums to be calculated on the total acreage as as opposed to subdivided, can I s- I assume the rezone has priority, that's contract, the the development in the rezone is already contracted and that's set in stone? By adding this language to, no, it's not set in stone, we can go back and change?
The the issue is, is that the comprehensive plan limits development beyond that that was permitted in that rezoning ordinance, and the comprehensive plan rules. The comprehensive plan is more restrictive than that rezoning ordinance, that the city cannot approve development over and above what's provided for in the comprehensive plan. Now, as far as the the density being calculated across the entire site, the purpose for that is so that we can encourage clustering of development, so that we can encourage leaving wide spanses of properties as open space or in their natural condition and cluster all that density on a portion of the parcel. So, for example, if someone came in and they had a ten-acre parcel and they wanted to only carve out five acres of that for residential development and leave the rest as park space, amenity center area, walking trails, et cetera, they could have the higher density on a smaller portion of the property. And if we only look at a subdivided parcel, they're not going to achieve that higher density that allows them to set aside that open space in that natural land. So that's the reasoning for allowing it to be calculated based on the whole area rather than a specific subdivided parcel.
We also have not one clue as to what a future subdivision might look like for that parcel, so I'm not even sure how we could do that.
Correct.
So are we operating within the current P C D zoning for that property?
The property is currently zoned P C D, but again.
But I heard it was illegal.
Yes, the P C D zoning does exist, that portion of it is enforceable as P C D zoning. However, the stricter provisions of the comprehensive plan rule. So the site is limited to forty-seven dwelling units, regardless of the rezoning ordinance that approved seventy-two.
Let me ask you this question. Does the current P C D zoning, so take the comp plan out of it just for a second, does the current P C D zoning give staff the latitude it needs to entertain development of that parcel with an eye to the future?
Not without the modifications to the comprehensive plan.
To the comprehensive plan, right.
Because of the limitations that are currently incorporated in the comprehensive plan. So, for example, if an applicant came in and said, well, we understand there's a rezoning ordinance that allows seventy-two acres on this parcel, we have to say, no, we cannot permit a development plan with seventy-two acres to proceed because it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor.
I think you answered my question when when you talked about subdividing that that parcel and how those percentages would apply. So if you if it was to be parceled off, I don't know, for want of a better word, smaller section, that open space would actually be smaller because you're working with a smaller number to begin with. Am I thinking about that correctly, you know what I'm talking about?
The thirty-five percent open space would be calculated on the property as a whole.
Oh.
Now, if someone were to only purchase a portion of that property, then the thirty-five percent would apply to their major site and development plan.
Oh.
Because it's no longer under common ownership.
Okay, so it would only apply to that whatever that acreage is for that part they're developing, is that what you're saying?
Right, so the common ownership issue is what would come into play when applying those those percentages and limitations.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, I was curious on the development for Seven A. Today, we've heard continuously that we need to protect the springs, and any development would be harmful to the springs along that vein. Seven A is not that far from the springs, and I'm concerned about some of the development in Seven A, even though it's been rezoned and they have some development rights already kind of in with their plan, they've got a D M P already too, don't they?
The D M P is in conflict with the comprehensive plan.
So how will development of Seven A, what what protections are there so that there isn't any damage to the springs and the creek that runs to the very western edge of this? What's what's there to protect all of that?
There are already provisions in the comprehensive plan regarding the creek and regarding review of the plans by the D E P as it relates to the creek and to manatee protection, et cetera, et cetera. In addition, requiring that maximum impervious surface area, the minimization of site disturbance, the provision that would require Florida natives landscaping, or all components that we can incorporate into the comprehensive plan and the Unified Land Development Code to help minimize any negative impacts on the springs or the creek.
So changing our comp plan would not open us up to a Burt Harris Act for something that's already been on the books for so many years, that has no expiration date and is already illegal because it's contract?
That is why we want to get the comprehensive plan consistent with the rezoning ordinance as far as the maximum densities are concerned.
Can we do that ahead of what you're planning to do for Seven? Or are you looking to do them simultaneously because?
We would prefer to do them simultaneously because of the staff investment of time and the process with the state review that's involved, but we will do whatever commission directs as far as bringing it as a package together or as individual amendments.
Have you, since you're the planner, have you had any interest in the development of Seven A? Have you had any activity with anybody coming in and saying, hey, we want to develop Seven A?
We have, and that is how this issue came to light.
Like this needs to be addressed, in my opinion, probably sooner rather than later. They can't develop without these changes, or can they develop based on what currently exists?
They can develop based on the limitations in the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. I think for me, it's really difficult to discuss this particular parcel without having a more strategic conversation about that whole area. But at this point, I think it's important, because this property is south of the springs, and we already have protections for the creek and environmental concerns in place, that we remove barriers to development of that parcel. So I am much inclined to go with the recommendations in this proposal, to change the comprehensive plan, to open that up, because, again, I I think planning and documents that were put in place more than five years ago had as their intention the entire city being residential, and and we're trying to, in a smart, thoughtful, planful way, modify that somewhat. And I had often thought, in in terms of the eighty or so acres around the springs that the city owns, to be much more restrictive in zoning than than what I see south of it, you know, given the right kinds of protections. So I would throw out for consideration to my fellow commissioners that we proceed ahead with the recommended comprehensive plan changes as outlined in this proposal. That also requires that we trust the process as we move forward with P C D-type development, that we trust the process to put the right guardrails in in place for the development of this parcel. So how do my fellow commissioners feel in terms of adopting the comp plan changes as outlined?
Yes.
I'd be a yes. Okay, I didn't really ask for a consensus, maybe I should. Let's make that a consensus then to adopt.
Oh, yes, we thought about it.
Okay, so I have two yeses, I would be a yes?
I would be a yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, thank you.
Pretty clear direction on that one.
I think we have direction to bring Seven A back for a comprehensive plan amendment independent of the broader Activities Center Seven, Warmineral Springs property.
Yeah, it sounds like we would be very comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does staff need anything else from us on either of these topics?
No, ma'am, I think that we have the direction we need, thank you very much.
Okay, you are more than welcome. Let's move on to the process. City Clerk, do we have any online public comment on this topic?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Rachel Suarez. The development proposed does not respect the natural setting of this ancient geographical natural wonder and risk damaging the springs. Acquired with public funds as a park, the city is now ignoring its own development code. We are looking for low-impact amenities only at Warmineral Springs. Maria Svalata, in the name of a large group of constituents, we oppose any additional development of the Warmineral Springs Park beyond the previously discussed plan. Use the nine-plus million to tear down a condemned building and office and stop deceiving the public that it will cost eighteen mil to do this. We now have a Parks and Recreation Department that manages Aquatic Center. Warmineral Springs has been making lots of money for decades, and not one single cent came back to change a tile or faucet. Stop presenting a simple facilities build as a many-million-dollar investment that would not would cost Northport taxpayers money. The money you have in the financial paragraph, it says you want to give the PPP three eight mil A O B to them potential FEMA money. Lease them a one-million-year asset for three hundred thousand income. How is this good business? The Warmineral Springs shall remain our property, will be preserved, as is natural sanctuary for flora and fauna, and patrons of spring will have finally, after thirty years, decent minimal facilities. The P three plan is a dead project without market research. Did you do focus groups for the so-called international visitors? Europeans have had a botanyology and kinesiology culture since Roman times. They have hundreds, if not thousands, of resorts with elegant hotels and spas all over Europe. The only reason they come to Warmineral Springs is for the unique pristine natural environment. This botanyology culture does not appeal to American public. Do the market research. It said, you do not think globally. None of the visitors are interested in museums, spas, event centers, trails, et cetera. They only want the spring waters. We put up with smelling portable toilets. We are willing to do it for one more, one year more until decent facilities are built. Please stop pretending that such facilities will cost over the nine mil we have already and need any outsiders to use Warmineral Springs as their cash cow. Open now, start using the money we have to rebuild as you already have the plan. Keep Warmineral Springs as park. Marianna and Maria Svalata. Dave Phillips. Honorable City Commissioners, we live adjacent to the Northport property line of the Springs property. We attended the protest, we attended the protest on Friday, one-six-twenty-three. It was obviously not the correct forum for obtaining meaningful public input. Your city manager did an excellent job under difficult circumstances. I did hear someone mention campgrounds as an alternative to the proposed P three. I am strongly opposed to having campgrounds on the site. In my opinion, people could get a tent or R V. I am into the campgrounds, and it would be difficult to monitor behavior and enforce rules. Instead of the two people who signed into the campground, you could easily have twice or triple that occupancy. It would be difficult to monitor and enforce and would require extensive and expensive security. I have traveled around the undeveloped Springs property and found one large homeless camp and several other small ones. A campground would become a magnet for the homeless. Also, I have not found any information pertaining to providing utilities to the site. City water and sewer forced main system sized to only serve the P three development, stormwater management, traffic study, non-motorized trails, et cetera. I was informed that a non-motorized trail was proposed for along Ortiz. Could you please advise us on the status of the trail? Ortiz is a high-volume, non-motorized traffic route, and it could really benefit from safe walkways for people traveling into the springs and the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. Eugene Livchin. It appears that the city already made a decision to hire Warmineral Springs Development Group to renovate existing facilities and develop her commercial site. I think it's an all, it's a unlawful. City of Northport has to go through competitive building process and not too rushing in P three business approach. City approved 2019 master plan developed by Kimberly Horn. This plan has been approved and seems perfect for M S site. Also, city shall seek additional funds to extend new sewer-water lines along Ortiz Boulevard to County Main pipes. Thank you and God bless. Marianna Lovavsky. I was and would be a frequent visitor of Warmineral Springs, the place I consider absolutely unique. Warmineral Springs development proposed by the company resided in Texas, looks like a quick grab of precious resources that would destroy completely Warmineral Springs as we know it. We don't need performance area, medical offices, restaurants, so-called wellness center built near Warmineral Springs. In addition, Mr. Bloom and Co. plan built building the walls of houses, including housing for low-income residents. Does it all look great to the city that will only collect two-hundred K in lease money? Who will enforce native landscaping? Who will collect the most of the profit other than Mr. Bloom and Co.? Why Northport can't take a smaller approach that will not impact the very existence of Warmineral Springs, the employment of local residents for development, such a plan will greatly benefit Northport City. I strongly oppose the plan presented to the city by Mr. Bloom and Co. We also need to. We also need to consider the livelihood of residents adjacent to Warm Mineral Springs. The local rents will be nonexistent, considering huge hotels that, after all, would need to be supported by the city during off-season and summertime. Enough is enough. Take the out-of-state proposal into your own hands, Northport City officials. Do not destroy the unique ecology of the Warm Mineral Springs Lake. Keep in mind the local interests versus Texas rich oil men interests. Develop the plan that will benefit us versus them. I definitely oppose the plan presented to Northport City by Mr. Bloom &amp; Co. Joan Heron Sandlin. I heard you, I heard you not to rush into any contracts. The commission should do its due diligence and review all proposals that will be submitted. The potential impact of heavy construction must be addressed. The city should address this issue and not wait for a contractor to do a study. The pristine nature of the springs must be preserved. In 2019, an overwhelming number of citizens indicated they wanted minimal development. I urge the commission to listen to the people. Zofia Wapaski, Wapasta. I oppose private development of motels and hotels around Warm Mineral Springs. The lake should be used by Northport citizens. It is very unique spring with many health benefits. It is also burial ground for many Native Americans. That place should be treated with respect. Vassal Lendiel. I moved from New York to Northport because of the healing property of the Warm Mineral Springs water. Putting big hotel near this precious lake may be catastrophic. Please do not do that. I oppose private development on the area of the mineral lake. Please hear the citizens of Northport. We want the lake to be open for our use. Kathy White. The Warm Mineral Spring protest was so informative, hearing from the citizens who are so passionate about Warm Mineral Springs Park and how much it means to them. Credit to the city manager, Jerome Fletcher, who spent hours fielding questions. The city also had an interpreter present. Most of the people just want the springs open. It's a wellness issue for many. The restroom trailer worked well before Ian, and bringing in new modular buildings that are built to current codes would be perfect and not as destructive to the park. As some people said, fence off the buildings and open the park. The buildings are listed in the National Register, but according to what I've read, doesn't restrict owners' basic right to use and dispose of the property as they see fit. The purpose is to encourage preservation. The city's partnership does, doesn't ensure the building's preservation. Ian may have destroyed them beyond what is economically feasible, and the investors may take them down. If preservationists want to fund and maintain without taking our park, present your plan. Why is the 2019 plan being shelved? Why is there a rush to an investment group to give away a self-supporting park and natural jewel? Warm Mineral Springs Park and the $9 million belong to the Northport citizens, paid for with taxpayer dollars. In my opinion, to even entertain the idea of giving away Warm Mineral Springs Park and $9 million to a newly-formed LLC is fiscally irresponsible. Tia Tyler. Warm Mineral Springs is a site with no equivalent in the United States. As of 2022, Florida has the fastest-growing population of any state in the country. However, the people of Florida have consistently shown strong, unified, and bipartisan support to conserve Florida's remaining green spaces. The city of Northport has a duty to manage public recreation sites like Warm Mineral Springs, with the utmost concern for their preservation and long-term security. The current proposal does not include a thorough vetting of the development's impact on fragile, hydraulic, and geological features of the site. Furthermore, the plan does not include continued access for all recreational users and has not considered public opinion. The city of Northport must present alternative proposals that are aligned with voter values and demonstrates forward-thinking land stewardship and recreation management. There must be time allotted for expert review and scientific assessment of the impacts of land use density and recreational capacity before long-term contracts are finalized. Thank you for your time. Anna Fidler. I am deeply troubled and concerned about the city commission's plans to move forward with zoning changes and partnership with the named development company. My family and I have been members of this community for over 20 years. We have seen the Warm Mineral Springs change from year to year. Unfortunately, unsuccessful business ventures have pushed the natural wonder of the springs and its surrounding property into despair. While the proposed developer's plan sounds good on paper, time and time again, my family and I, as well as many concerned residents of the area, witnessed poor planning and mismanagement that has damaged the nature and history of the springs. Today is an important day for the city commission to fulfill its duty to faithfully represent the wishes of its constituents and not a hastily-developed business plan of maliciously opportunious developers who have never set foot into the springs and have zero connection to its land. Instead, please consider the following for the future: slow down in selecting a private partner. We must ensure the right partner is selected who has the best interests of the Warm Mineral Springs. An objective environmental assessment must be completed and peer-reviewed before any private partner or rezoning decisions are made. Most of Northport is already zoned for commercial and residential development. We must maintain green spaces, especially something as important and historic as the Warm Mineral Springs. The Warm Mineral Springs is the lowest-flowing spring in Florida and is already at risk of dying. Should the commission fail to represent its constituents and continue with this destructive plan, then the constituents will demonstrate their dissatisfaction by voting out the failures and voting in those who care about the preservation of the springs. And that's all.
Thank you, City Clerk. We have a number of people in house who want to speak. I'll call people up three at a time, and then they'll speak in order of being called up. Alan Hale.
I had my question.
You did. Okay. Robin San Vicente. Good, you're first. James Strauss. Good. Kara Mullin. You've been sitting a long time, huh? Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm kind of spinning at the moment, so forgive me. But what I did want to say is, first, I just wanted to appreciate the headway that we have made with the addition of wildlife protection, some more green space being set aside. So I do thank you all for that. I don't know if you all know, but I managed the spring, was the director of operations, production, you name it, for 10 years, until 2009. So I'm very aware of the springs. I've worked with some of you back then, and we presented plans back then. I know the springs like the back of my hand. I know the topography. I know the sensitivity of the spring. I know what you can and what you shouldn't be doing. The sensitivity of the buffer that you have placed around the spring is not enough. It's somewhat good, and it's going to protect it somewhat, but you still have the karst topography, which is the whole 81 acres. It's closer towards the sensitivity of the buffer zone that you have, but what we found out was that through engineering, through vibrational, through boring for archaeological findings and so forth, it can disrupt the spring because of the topography, because of the cheese-like porous sensitivity in the limestone of the spring itself. That spring feeds the Salt Creek, goes into the Mayaca, and also the Charlotte Harbor, believe it or not. And you cannot risk developing that close to the spring and forfeiting the spring. It's happened in other areas of our country where they thought they were doing something good to bring in some economic base to help keep the building and whatever, and it didn't work. And the spring went dry and it collapsed. And the vents are very sensitive, and they're just getting more and more sensitive. In addition to that, you have some deep injection wells that are on near the springs as well that are supposed to be monitored monthly by the city of Northport, which then maintains are the waters being contaminated, which again feeds into the Salt Creek, which then again houses the manatees, which then again you have a whole domino effect. So in looking at this P3 development, I wouldn't even give it a second look. Not even a second look. And I like what you said about the not encompassing the whole 81 acres, but setting aside at least 20. That gives you somewhat, but it's still not enough. And as far as increasing density, the more weight you put on a karst topography, the more you can expect collapse. And as far as money-making, when I was there, we were racking in the money.
Ma'am, you're out of time. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But we were racking in the books because we did proper marketing.
James Strauss.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be heard. Appreciate all your work. Jerome, are you busy over there on your phone? Would you be able to be a part of the conversation, please? Thank you, sir. As you did spend two hours on Friday, and that was greatly appreciated, but it does seem as though there is some detachment that's coming as we progress further and further down this road. I do want to be here more as we progress into this and as the springs open back up. Thank you for getting the procurement to get some modular trailers to get the springs back open. That is greatly appreciated. There, on the citizen's side of things, it does seem as though there could be some shady stuff that's happening around here. I do have a commissioner that's former that's sitting next to the development company. Now, as a concerned citizen, I'm going to question that just naturally. I'm also going to question what's happening internally and externally with everything that's going on. So as your reelection that comes up, I would weigh that heavily because we're looking at you guys as commissioners, who we're going to vote back in and who we're going to vote out. Now, for generations to come, as commissioners, looking at this development plan or any development in that area, how do you want them to be seen? Do you want it to be seen as something that they look away from? That they can't afford to stay at the hotel? That they can't afford to buy a condo or residential unit there? They can't even afford to be able to go in to the warm springs because now the costs have increased because they have to cover the cost for the hotel that's empty because of hurricane season or slow season? These are all things to consider. And I would hope and pray that you look at it from a different, bigger perspective than just the here and now. Do not put the cart before the horse. Take the time. We just want the springs back open. That's one of the biggest things. But we're okay with the buildings being closed or shut down. We didn't need them to begin with. So it's okay to take the time that you need to develop the protocols and procedures to do the proper means with this land, whether it's protecting and preserving the whole entire 80 acres and developing it as a state park, or allowing it to be what it is and just doing handicap walkways and doing a park like the Five Senses or Mayacahachi and keep it that pristine, green Florida open space. You have three tributaries in that area. The Warm Springs that runs out, you have the next creek that's next to it, and then you have a slough. They all need to be maintained. They all need to be improved. What is the city doing? We don't have sidewalks. We don't have lights out there. We don't have the ability to hold this development, even in five years from now. So take the time, please, to do the right thing.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Kara.
Thank you. My name's Kara Mullin, and I didn't comment in the beginning because I wanted to listen to the meeting so I understood really what the purpose was today. And I believe the purpose of the meeting was for the planner to get some direction from the commission. And so what I'm, from what I'm hearing from everybody, I think I could help with the direction, that with all of the things that they have to do, they should do those and leave this project on the back burner and, because it does not have anything, as we we've learned, the P3 doesn't follow the original master plan. And so I think what we're all saying, a lot of us, and I haven't heard to the contrary, is that this is not the proper plan. The P3 situation does not work for Warm Mineral Springs. Everybody has said why, they believe that. So we should probably let them continue their jobs except for this project, and that we continue to look for another way to manage. And things change rapidly, obviously. We know in the last three years, the city has changed dramatically. The needs of the city have changed dramatically. We've had a hurricane. We see what's coming. This is just the, Ian is just the beginning. There's more in store. Are we thinking about the future? Are we thinking about the aquifer of water use, of oxygen and air and clean water and all of these things? And it sounded to me, from what I was hearing, that we were going to figure that out after we had the plan in place. I wasn't hearing that we were going to do all of this with the Florida, Southwest Florida Water Management District before we did anything. It was like together, like what, what can Northport handle? And Northport isn't just Northport. Northport is the Mayaca River Water Basin, and Northport is the Charlotte Harbor, and Northport is Southwest Florida Water Management District. So we have to, we are putting the cart before the horse. And so I encourage, I encourage you to consider looking at other options. And to me, less is more. So I believe that there is a way to honor the Native Americans by having it be as close to it was when they were here. That would be probably a better museum in itself rather than building a museum. And I do believe that there is many countless ways to get your money without it being a burden to the city. And I know that you had mentioned other springs. So for example, Three Sister Springs, they partnered with the federal government to make it a wildlife sanctuary. So there are other options on the table where you don't have to manage the property, but you could get some of the revenue. So I think it's time to consider more options, and development doesn't sound like one.
Thank you, ma'am. The next three folks up, Jasmine Bowman, Bridget Grassman, and Kenneth Wells. Yes, Jasmine, come on up. You have three minutes.
Hello. I live in Northport. In my previous communications with the commission, I've been encouraged to inform myself, and the more information I get, I have to agree, the more shady and underhanded all of this looks. Indeed, very. So we're being told that $9 million isn't enough for a basic bathroom and office facility at Warm Mineral Springs Park, which is one of our public parks. We're being told that we have to give our public park to developers, turn it into a mini Lakewood Ranch in order to fund it, and we have $9 million. Well, I guess the buildings are the problem because the, as far as I see, they're a total loss. They should just be torn down and put up a simple office building. That would be well within the budget. But I understand some people are attached to the buildings for historical purposes. I'm not. I don't know anyone who is. Everyone I know goes to the springs for the springs and for nature, connection to nature. I've never met anybody that said, man, I just want to go look at those buildings, ever. But there might be somebody. I'm saying, there could be somebody out there. I don't know, a historical preservationist. But as others have mentioned, we could certainly do it in stages. We could certainly put up temporary bathroom and office, which is all we need. The building's fenced off, and then later on, if these historical preservationists wish to add funding, fine, that they could fix the buildings over time. But the buildings are, should not be the priority, and the building should not be a reason to give our public park and our natural treasure, which is extremely fragile, to developers. So, you know, there's ways we can do this. We can work within our budget, within our means to do this. It's not going to, like I mentioned, the buildings are destroyed. It's not going to hurt them to sit. I mean, at this point, as they are, they can't really get any worse. But we could destroy our springs by doing this, and we can't build that. You know, I understand if you want to make money, you can go build things anywhere. There's lots of places all over the city where they're building things, and I'm sure that we will lose more green space every year. But this particular space is special. It's a treasure. And I think that there's a lack of understanding about that and about, you know, what it, what it means to the people of the city and of the state. It really should be a state park, but since at the moment it isn't, I encourage you to be responsible with it and to use the money that we have to do it slowly. Nobody here is asking for fancy amenities. Nobody here wants fancy amenities, just simple, basic stuff and lots of green space protected, because that's what we don't have in the world. Every town has hotels and condos and strip malls and more and more and more of that, but not every town has the fountain of youth, and it is rare, and it is special, and we should protect it.
Thank you. Ms. Grassman.
Good afternoon. Having worked at the springs for over 20 years, I've seen owners and managers come and go. Sam Heron, Ed Allman, Jean Vacaro, and now the Northport City with national state and park concessions. Under Allman and, Allmans and Jean Vacaro's leadership, the springs really came alive and flourished. Different events, massages, healthy restaurants, fairs, drum playing, selling spring water, selling spices from the spring, yoga, Tai Chi, water therapy, and of course, daily water aerobics. Well, what a grand time. Well, what a grand time we had. The latest owners and managers stopped all that fun stuff. We all missed the amenities terribly. But at least we still had the spring. Ed Allman and Jean Vacaro brought in a lot of revenue. We used to joke about that the spring is a cash cow. Now the city wants to bring in a new partner, wants to build, build, build. And so we are afraid of losing the spring itself. About 10 years ago, we went through this same fright. Grandiose ideas and plans for various reasons fell through. It was a relief. But what I learned from that time was a couple that came from White Springs, Florida. They heard about our dilemma and wanted to put a strong warning out to us about building too close to the spring. They showed us slides of the deterioration of their spring, which previously sent 49 million gallons of water daily to the surface. Even Teddy Roosevelt and Henry Ford visited that spring. Previous owners were Indians who considered it, it had healing powers. Our Seminole Indians considered our spring a sacred ground for healing and burials. White Sulphur Springs is dead. It was announced in 1990. All you see is ruins of bathhouses. It was a popular place to enjoy. We are scared about losing this natural gift from nature. The underground estuaries and veins that supply our precious mineral water are so sensitive to being disturbed. The jaws of overdevelopment will kill it. Northport has lots of, lots of unbilled acres. If you must build in, build far away.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is up. Mr. Wells?
Hi, I'm Ken Wells. Thanks for hanging out this long. So I've been covering the Springs for 50 years. And I looked all over the world for the best place to retire, for the best body of water, and here it is. Yay. But it's the dying springs. Because if you study, the two main factors that are killing springs, it's the flow or lack of, and the so-called nutrients, the nitrates, the phosphates, from mostly inorganic fertilizer, septic tanks, industrial, commercial runoff. Well, our springs is no longer flowing at 9 million gallons a day. It's flowing about half that. I don't know if any of you knew this. That's why it's critical that there's absolutely no development anywhere around the Springs. None. Every ounce of rainwater is what recharges especially the nine cold springs that are in the Springs. The two hot springs are from very deep down. They are protected. The cold, they're not. We need both. Any development is going to hurt. Any concrete is going to block some of the rain from recharging the aquifers that feed these cold springs. It's very simple science. The only thing to do is to protect the springs, not preserve. Nature preserves. Our job is to not let contamination happen. Vice Mayor White, you mentioned Wikiwachi. I was just there. They have a sign that says, "Swim at your own risk." I asked why. High level of contaminants, nitrates and phosphates that cause cancer, are in that water and several springs in our state. We have over 1,000 springs. Many of them are contaminated. Many of them have dried up. Many. It's a catastrophe going on, not just in the Springs, but all bodies of water. The rivers, the lakes, everywhere, even the Gulf. All full of algae because of these runoff. So far, they have not detected that much ammonia nitrogen or nitrates in the water. So far. But the flow is not good. We can't do anything to jeopardize the flow. Any development jeopardizes the flow. It's that simple. All this is nonsense. You should scrap the whole thing about this P3 business. You should focus on opening the Springs and doing whatever you can to fix the infrastructure right around the Springs. It's that simple. It's no more discussion. Anything else is not acceptable and will be fought to the bitter end. Because it is not right. We are the stewards of the Springs. We know you, right now, in the business of being the steward, but I don't think you want to be. I don't know why you don't sell it to somebody like a group that would take care of it properly. And by the way, that's not wasteland, those 52 acres. That's vital watershed. That's part of the Warm Mineral Springs basin, so-called 7A. All this should be protected. They already built too many homes, like yours, Juliette, that shouldn't have never been built.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you for that.
Yay.
Quiet, please. Our next three speakers up, Jill Luke, Jenna Slater, Sharon Bryant Phillips. Ms. Luke, you're first up.
I really appreciate, oh Jill Luke, I really appreciate the comments by the gentleman. It is the flow that takes away, that diminishes that flow. And it is population. It is the growth. That map that I talked about, that none of the houses are within the city, they're all in the unincorporated county, they're all well and septic. And the more houses that are built, they don't have city water and sewer. They tap down into that aquifer. And that is the major reason that any spring dries up is because the aquifer is being removed because there's not city utilities. The P3 will be bringing in those utilities. And Commissioner, you might want to talk to the county when you have your meeting with them about their county hooking up to city utilities. It would help to present that or preserve, protect that spring even higher. It is unique. And Commissioner White, you're exactly right. There's a difference between preserving and protecting. And I appreciate the history of the lady. That has been abused to make money through the private. They had some enhancements, but it has been abused. People have gone down in diving, and to my knowledge, there are 19 burials compared to Little Salt Spring that has been preserved and has over 1,000 burials. But they've gone down, they've removed the artifacts, they've removed the bones. The sand was brought in to keep it, you know, people hurting their feet and stuff like that. So it's not been preserved. The water may be protected, but it's not preserved even the way that Little Salt Spring is. So we're talking about studies, and I'm thoroughly behind every kind of study. Again, I'm going to question those homes that are being built closer to the water, closer to the vents than the P3 development way over on the other side. Did they do the studies? Did they contact DEP and do all of these studies for their homes? Is it going to be mandatory that residential homes have those same types of things that are being placed on the P3? But I agree, the P3 needs to do it. So does the P3 agree that they need to do it. They're not going to dump millions of dollars into development and have the water disappear. I know the gentleman that I was sitting beside, he is a very holistic individual. He wouldn't do anything to harm what is within this natural world. So no, they can't, they won't do anything. And as far as what you were talking about, you guys approved 7A? If you'll approve 7, the same way you approved 7A?
Oh, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Can allow to recalculate?
Jenna Slater, you are up, madam.
The spring is a low-flowed, third magnitude spring that could die at any moment, with or without construction. Everyone here continues to reiterate that. I don't think any one of you on this council want to be responsible for its death. As a community member, taxpayer, sales executive, and fellow capitalist, I commend ex-commissioner Jill Luke, Ashley and Michael for convincing the city that they are the right partners for this project. Given that Ashley and Michael have no connection to and have never set foot in the spring, I find it obvious that this is a game of dollars and cents. So let's talk money. Simply put, this is a bad deal for both the city and the Warm Mineral Spring Development Group. Let me tell you why. Number one, given that the spring is one of the lowest-flowing springs in all of Florida, it's highly sensitive, meaning this project is a huge gamble and their money will most likely go to waste. For example, as noted, the White Sulphur Spring, which is just three hours north of here, died in 1990 after similar development went through. Number two, if any of the developers had ever been to the spring, they would know that what they're proposing to build is entirely out of touch with the needs and demographics of this area. Number three, providing a labor and performance bond is smart because they know it is not going to cost $18 million to complete this project. These prices are grossly inflated and frankly insulting to everyone in this room. Number four, the entitlement conditions in the development group's proposal are unlikely to be met anyway. So what happens then? Back to the drawing board. Bye, Jill. Number five, we already spent years of taxpayer time and money to develop the 2019 master plan. It is irresponsible to throw it away. This brings me to my point of this meeting. We need to pump the brakes and be thoughtful. There is another way. Considering rezoning at this stage is ridiculous. Almost all of Northport is already zoned for commercial and residential development. Northport already has one of the worst flood profiles in Southwest Florida. Hurricane Ian made that clear. It's also clear that this plan doesn't take into consideration the sensitive nature of the spring shed or the existing capacity constraints of the spring, which are constantly already at maximum capacity. Before we move forward, we have to have the following. Number one, an objective, third-party, peer-reviewed environmental assessment completed, period. No P3 or development should proceed until this is done. This is not an "and" in tandem as we vote on these rezoning issues, but an "if." Number two, we need to perform a competitive estimate of probable costs for the Phase 1 renovation. The cost estimated by Kim Lee Horn was highly inflated and cannot be used as a single source of truth. Having any further discussions about rezoning before these items are complete is irresponsible for the constituents, taxpayers, and everyone in this room. You're wasting our time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Phillips?
I live in Durango, and I'm part of the Community Garden. And I've been here for about seven years. Warm Mineral Springs is right among the top three mineral springs in the world. Yet it is a hidden treasure. It is the gem of Florida and is a component as to why Northport is ranked the number-two best place to live in Florida and ranked 17 best places to live in the USA. Now we have a tremendous opportunity to enhance its beauty, viability, and contribution to uplifting nature, yet at the same time, making it profitable to responsible developers. First, my question is, what has been the process of reaching out nationwide for a bid that will be profitable yet pleasing to the residents? I would challenge every person here concerned to submit plans or ideals that will both satisfy a reasonable developer as well as keeping a viable community pleased with the progress. I served on the Superior Park Commission for 12 years. I had visited parks in 50 countries and 50 states. So I would like to share my vision of enhancing nature, serving delighted residents, and at the same time, giving developers and the city a continuous, ongoing, profitable flow of income. And another question I have is, what is your ultimate long-term goal in increasing the income? How can we achieve this and enhance nature? Maybe we could, you know, get bonds to, from the public to see how their contribute can be. Now, I passed out a plan. I think every one of you have it. And I know we got to keep the Springs. We got to keep the concrete down. A bird-watching sanctuary, butterfly house, a school. I'm a former teacher. So a school for the school field trips, for the museum. This is all the dollar signs. A theater where people can have night performances. Restaurants. An Ayurveda massage. In Ecuador, they have a wonderful, they use the Springs for a wonderful mud bath and then a rinse bath. And oh my God, I love the equestrian. We could have a little tiny hot dog ice cream stand. A doggy park where people can come and walk their dogs. But the biggest component of my plan...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, you're out of time. Mark, the next three folks up.
Is the water park, Lima, Peru.
Margot Kowalska, Bozina, and Lucy. Come on up. Introduce yourself, ma'am, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Kay Chase. And I don't really, hopefully you can hear me. My voice has been kind of come again and go again.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Kay Chase.
Chase, thank you.
And I've just, I've heard wonderful things. And I've sat here long enough, I finally decided I am going to go ahead. I'm here today because I'm very concerned about the future of Warm Mineral Springs. And I don't feel the proposed project is the proper one for this very special natural wonder. Hopefully, all or most of you have heard of Mayaca State Park. And what an amazing place it is. I'm going to read just this excerpt from the history of the Mayaca. "A satellite image of Florida reveals the transformation of land that has occurred in just a few decades in that state." "The image depicts the results of Florida's unprecedented rampant growth, with islands of wilderness, huge and small, scattered across the peninsula of urban and suburban development linked to the agricultural lands." "The Mayaca Island, or the Mayaca State Park, the island, is one of those green spots. The first time I heard the term 'Mayaca Island' was in the early 1990s, when a residential development containing over 6,000 homes was planned along the park's suburban border. Now, the Mayaca Island, or the Mayaca Park, is loosely defined as the remaining native habitat in the Mayaca watershed. Large contingent chunks of land, such as the Mayaca Island, are increasingly rare and vulnerable to Florida's rapid growth. The Mayaca Island is one of the last remaining large wilderness areas in Southwest Florida, acquired and managed in perpetuity as a natural ecosystem. And what we have here, you're dealing with in your own backyard, is another amazing natural phenomenon, which should be preserved as such so that the world can observe it now and for decades to come. Somehow, in my mind, I find a 250-room hotel and 300 living quarters, whether they're houses or whatever they're going to be, having..."
Ma'am, your time is up. I'm sorry. Three minutes goes fast, doesn't it?
Yeah, it goes quickly.
Okay, Margot Kowalska, I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
But?
Your time is up.
Yes.
We need to go to the next speaker.
So I ask though that.
Margot Kowalska.
You don't give the Springs away.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Margot Kowalska, is she still here? No. Bozina?
No.
No. Lucy?
No.
Lara Fine?
No.
Inga? Hulzina? Okay, good. David Ionati, you'll be next. Jeffrey Scott, you're third. And Kai Buck? And Kai Buck Usulu, I'm sorry, I know I'm, okay, you're fourth. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Thank you. So we've heard a lot of right words, and we've heard how much all of you guys say that you care and hear us out and everything. Words are great. We would love to see some action. We would love to see how you're fighting for the people of Northport and what you're doing to protect such a wonderful and such an amazing space. Northport, the first thing you see when you turn in from the highway is the sign Mineral Springs. You see a beautiful little street in Venice that's famous for such-and-such, Sarasota, Naples, such-and-such. Mineral Springs is what represents and what makes us so special. You start digging, you collapse the pond, the lake, sorry, so many things will go wrong. We owe that to ourselves and to the future generations to save that place. The property values will go down as well because a lot of people, they invest because of that. Not for the builder, he'll get his profit, but for people that live here for many, many years. And another question I have, why it's not open yet? The water was checked, it's nice, it's clear. You say that you're losing money. Why not start bringing that in? So many people were begging for it. What do we need? Portable building to get the money in, portable toilets? It's cheap money that you will recover immediately. Why it's not open? And, sorry, I made notes, so trying to go quick for my three minutes. Do not push for that P three and do not open the Pandora box, do not worry about lawsuits and stuff like that and how to please the builder. Please worry about people of Northport that spend their lives here, that believe in you, that trust you, that count on you. And if you need to do moratorium, you're a brilliant minds, you know how to deal with that, but please help us out. And many people need it for health reasons, and they have been coming here for years. The builder will not care for it when he's going to get 99 years. We don't know what he's going to do with the lake. Right now, we have a lot of people that coming in there, they are retirees. They live in Northport, they have their own discount, two repasses, 150, it's five bucks. How much is it going to cost to really enjoy the Mineral Springs and come in and go for a few times because people believe it's more than once that you need to visit that? All that need to be taken into consideration when you build it. People were talking about collapsing it, people were talking about 700,000 square feet commercial building. This is a lot of buildings, never mind the residential ones. So there's a lot of enthusiastic people that will help you to get quotes, that deal with budget, just get community involved, whatever we can help.
Ma'am, your time is up. Mr. Ionati, you're next.
David Ionati, Beeville Avenue, Northport. I'd like to read the section seven of the Article Seven of the ULDC. This is section 5546. This is regarding Activity Center Seven, which is Warm Mineral Springs. Activity Center Seven District is established for the purpose of identification, protection, preservation, and the beneficial use of property strategically located around the environmental resource of the natural spring. It is intended that this district shall not be a holding category for land, but rather a terminal category to ensure that the present and future residents of the city of Northport shall be able to enjoy and have access to this area. What are we asking to do for a developer right now? Let's change our comp plan, let's change our zoning, let's bend over backwards for the developer. It's just ridiculous. Nobody can objectively watch what's happened here today and not think that this is something completely run afoul. The city needs to go back and look at what was vetted by the citizens of this city. And that is, Commissioner Stokes made a good point. He said, you know, there's got to be a solution here that's between where we are now and what's the proposed development, the P three. That is that 2019 master plan. I encourage you to look at it. There are opportunities to enhance that resource as a ecotourist destination, with respect for the springs and the property and the history that's there. It's there, we don't need this. Thank you, Mr. Bloom, goodbye. This is 51 people today, citizens, 51 citizens in Northport told you how they feel, and one former commissioner, the only one who spoke in favor of it. What does that tell you? I mean, we're out of touch here with the people if we want to do something like this. And the way it's being done, I'm sorry, you really all look bad. You really all look bad. And worse, let's say you go through with this and this does damage the springs irreparably, you're going to be associated with that. You're going to be associated with damaging something that is millennia's yet so much bigger than you or I. This is the earliest potential intentional burial in all of North America was at the springs, and it's been preserved for a reason. And now the government's going to come in, buy it with taxpayer money, and then subsidize private development on that public land and sign it over to a private developer? This is outrageously wrong. Please, examine your conscience.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scott?
The Northport City Commission approved a P three proposed relationship with a recently formed LLC. To date, no commissioner knows exactly what this P three would look like beyond what the LLC revealed at a monthly meeting. In other words, our city commission committed the taxpayers to a conceptual plan partner the citizens of Northport know very little about. I believe this conceptual plan proposal does not in any way, shape, or form represent the residents of Northport who support and visit the springs. I believe the city's administration has begun the process to lock arms with a P three conceptual plan in order to get Warm Mineral Springs behind them. Here are my concerns that involve the creation of this conceptual plan in no particular order. Number one, does the LLC partner bring unique experience or knowledge to the P three? That's to be determined. Number two, who will be responsible for tracking the progress of this conceptual plan if, in fact, it does occur? If, in fact, it does occur? Does the LLC believe in fiscal discipline, which should avoid any additional expense, financial harm to the Northport taxpayers? Will oversight by city staff ensure the proposed P three does not go off the rails? Does the conceptual plan address any potential risks that could occur with a project of such magnitude? Is this an example of an overbearing and unrealistic conceptual plan as outlined today and presented by city staff? Yes, it is. Number seven, does the footprint of this conceptual plan lend itself to unrestricted growth and environmental degradation? And finally, number eight, how can this P three conceptual plan not be intrusive to the many residents and outside patrons who visit the springs? The list of concerns I have with Warm Mineral Springs conceptual plan should not be taken lightly by the Northport City Commission. Do not solely rely on staff recommendations moving forward. The current city administration constantly advocates for blind obedience. Public input is essential, and without it, this P three partnership will surely go off the rails. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ursula? And please, repeat your name into the record. I know I didn't do it justice.
Good afternoon. My name is Ursula Kobrak, and I'm a relatively very new citizen of Northport. Probably the few points that I'm going to mention are going to be repeating what my previous speaker said, but I do feel it's very important, and I will be very short. So respect Native American spiritual grounds. The comprehension plan gives some hope for that. I like to hear that today. Respect the nature and history. No big development plans around Mineral Lake, so the structure will be preserved. Open the Mineral Springs Lake to the citizens of Northport as soon as possible. No private developers on the public ground. The city needs money for restorations. We hear this on Friday. And instead of looking for money from private investments, that money may come from different sources. Why not to look for donors, organizations, charities that are willing to spend money on preserving the nature? There is plenty of charity organizations and private people who would love to get involved in this project that is connected with this precious lake. Have you reached out? Did you find out all the resources available? And I know the city has people who are taking care of grants. I don't know if that was done, but I hope you can consider that option. A good administrator, before he decides on a project that may have such a big impact as losing the natural resources, should consider into all the possibilities and resources. Have you done that? I'm sure there is a way to satisfy the needs of all involved, and I actually thank you to all people who spoke before me because I did learn a lot. As they say, if there is a will, there is a way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we close this meeting, I just want to thank all of you, particularly those who are still here after a very long meeting. I really appreciate your input. You've certainly given me some ideas and some food for thought. And I really wish we had this level of participation in every major decision we have to make up here as commissioners. So thank you again very, very much. So at this point, we have completed... Do you need time?
No, not for the next public comment.
We have more public comments?
For the next public comment section.
Oh, okay, great. Before I close, I always forget that last one, particularly when we've just had an hour and a half of public comment. Go ahead, city clerk. Thank you.
Susan Gastoni. I attended the last meeting and was very surprised that despite all the opposition to the P three plan expressed by the large number of people in attendance, the commissioners acted to complete contrary of the people's wishes. Our social system combines capitalism and democracy. I would like to remind our commissioners of this quote by one of our forefathers and President Franklin D. Roosevelt. "The liberty of a democracy is not safe if the people tolerate the growth of private power to a point where it becomes stronger than the democratic state itself." That, in its essence, is fascism, ownership of government by an individual, by a group or any controlling private power. With this statement in mind, I would ask our commissioners to please listen to the people who use and value this spring. We want to keep it undeveloped and in its natural state. We believe it is a safer place and it's counterintuitive and environmentally irresponsible to surround such a place with a hotel and large complex of commercial buildings. Such development could endanger the geological structure of the springs and create overcrowding at a place that already has had overcapacity issues. Please, let's leave some green space in our already overcrowded, overdeveloped, precious place we know as Florida. People have come here for years for its natural beauty, yet we continue to pave paradise and put up a parking lot. I appeal to you commissioners to protect our environment and green spaces so the old Florida people yearn for its completely destroyed by Umbretal Development. Joan Valdiva. I am a resident of Tampa, Florida. I am a physician and competitive freediver, freediving instructor. To my knowledge, Warm Mineral Springs is probably the best inland freediving location in Florida. The spring is open, no overhead, warm, and when conditions are right, visibility is just impeccable. When freediving is practiced under strict safety standards by certified and trained freedivers with the use of lanyards and safety buddy systems, proper briefing and debriefing, knowledge of freediving risk assessment and risk mitigation, freediving can be a very fulfilling activity physically and mentally. I do not know of any freediving incidents at Warm Mineral Springs. The place attracts freedivers from all around Florida and out of state. The potential for freediving is quite niche, with a max center depth of about 42 m vertical drop. It has been the perfect place of many freedivers who have broken national and continental freediving records to date. Humbly, my opinion is that Warm Mineral Springs is an ideal freediving place for the trained, certified, knowledgeable freediving community. For any questions or concerns, my email is above. I cannot recommend anyone to free dive as it can be very risky. However, for the trained freediver, Warm Mineral Springs has been a safe location to my knowledge. Anna Fidler. I am deeply troubled and concerned about the city commission's plans to move forward with zoning changes and partnership with the named development company. My family and I have been members of this community for over 20 years. We have seen the Warm Mineral Springs change from year to year. Unfortunately, unsuccessful businesses, ventures have pushed the natural wonder of the springs and its surrounding property into despair. While the proposed developer plans sound good on paper, time and time again, my family and I, as well as many concerned residents of the area, witness poor planning and mismanagement that has damaged the nature and history of the springs. Today is an important day for the city commission to fulfill its duty to faithfully represent the wishes of its constituents and not a hastily developed business plan of maliciously opportunist developers who have never set foot into the springs and have zero connection to this land. Instead, please consider the following for the future: slow down in selecting a private partner. We must ensure the right partner is selected who has the best interest of Warm Mineral Springs. An objective environmental assessment must be completed and peer-reviewed before any private partner or rezoning decisions are made. Most of Northport is already zoned for commercial or residential development. We must maintain green spaces, especially something as important and historic as the Warm Mineral Springs. The Warm Mineral Springs is the lowest-flowing spring in Florida, and it's already at risk of dying. Should the commission fail to represent the constituents and continue with this destructive plan, the constituents will demonstrate their dissatisfaction by voting out the failures and voting in those who care about the preservation of the springs. And that's all.
Thank you, city clerk. I do believe we've heard from everyone in chambers on this topic. So since we have completed our agenda today and staff has what they need to move forward, I'm adjourning today's workshop. Thank you. It is 2:12.